Hello, everyone. It's six o'clock. If I could just ask the members of council to turn on your video so I can see you at the top of the screen. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you. Nice to see everyone. And welcome. As I called the meeting to order, I just want to acknowledge this is a special committee of the whole for budget as we're calling this meeting to order. We just acknowledged that the lands on which we're gathering are the traditional territories of the coast and the straight Salish peoples, specifically the Lakongan speaking people known today as the Songhies and the Squamalte First Nations. And we recognize that their connections to these lands and waters continues to this day. First up on the agenda, I just want to have, we need to approve the agenda. But if we could just have a motion to also allow for public input at this meeting. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing any of those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed? That carries. Thank you very much. There we go. Sorry. And I'm just moving on to my next pieces. The first item up here is an overview. And we do this at the beginning of every budget meeting, just to provide some context for those watching and for council to understand what's been happening, what changes have been made and to provide us a little bit of a foundation as we move forward on the specific items in the budget. So first up, I'll hand this over to Mr. Payne, our Director of Financial Services. Welcome, Mr. Payne.
Well, thank you, worship. Good evening to council and the public. Just going to share my screen here to start the presentation. And we begin the presentation by reminding folks that the district was a recipient of the 2021 award for distinguished budget presentation through the Government Finance Officers Association of U.S. and Canada. And this draft financial plan will be prepared in accordance with the same standards to meet or exceed those award criteria. So we'll discuss just on this slide, the agenda that we have before council and the public today. We want to start out the meeting as we do normally by discussing budget principles, the remaining process and timeline for budget deliberations. I'll present a quick draft financial plan overview. We'll discuss asset management and reserves. And we have the folks from the Greater Victoria Public Library here to present their operating budget to us. And then we'll move on to a capital plan, which would include corporate administration, finance and IT, fire and emergency services, and if we have time, engineering and parks recreation and culture. So the principles used to put the financial plan together, the draft that we see before us is first and foremost, the financial plan is prepared using a service level approach. We assume that council wishes to continue with the service levels that they've established either inherently or explicitly through the year. We adjust service levels as council directs or as regulation requires. We align our funding sources so that it's just give a bit of feedback there. We align our our funding so that funding for ongoing operating expenditures are sustainable, ongoing revenues and one-time infrequent or large expenditures are aligned with reserve funding generally. Any projects that were approved in the 2021 through 2025 financial plan carry forward into this financial plan? And if those projects are underway, the funding for those projects has automatically been carried forward into this financial plan. The five-year financial, the financial plan is a five-year forecast of our expected expenditures and it provides expenditure authority for those five years. And we refine those every year as we bring the financial plan to council for consideration. This is why in particular the years 2022 and 2023 in that financial plan are important. 2022 is our expenditure authority for spending this year and 2023 also is expenditure authority for 2023. And typically, by the time that we come back to council in 2023, we will, it will be partway through 2023. So we will have started some of that spending. So council is approving expenditure authority for the five years and we rely on that expenditure authority for the beginning of next year's budget deliberations. We've taken the steps necessary to integrate lifecycle costing into our financial plan, especially with new or expanded capital services. So if we, if council wishes to embark on capital services that are new to community, then we report the full lifecycle costs of that decision, not just the capital or additional investment of that decision. The financial plan is prepared with the objective of providing transparency to the community and to council. Financial plan is not a regulated or legislated document. The financial plan bylaw, however, is. The financial plan bylaw is rolled up on a very high level. That's to allow for maximum operational flexibility. And that's why we pair that bylaw with this document so that the community can gain for the benefits of the transparency as well as the operational flexibility found in the bylaw. And the financial plan is, is prepared with long-term vision so that financial decisions are made in the best interests of all generations, not just the generation that is part of the five-year financial plan. So how do things appear in the financial plan? Generally, council approved service levels such as operational plans. Council specifically directed initiatives show up in the financial plan. This, this year for this financial plan, strategic planning was moved to November in the prior year. That helped us get some of those strategic initiatives into the first version of the financial plan. And then there's staff interpretation of the action needed to implement council-endorsed plans or vision. There's many plans that are underway, some that have been adopted by council. I use the urban forest management plan as a, as an example. Staff, since that's a council-endorsed plan, staff endeavor to carry out the objectives of that plan and we interpret how that can be done in the most cost-effective manner. Staff, don't make service level change consciously or implement new services unless legislated without first checking in with council because new services bind the community to ongoing operating expenses and that's the priorities decision that rightfully is made by governance body. Public input is welcome at every stage of the financial plan deliberations. We've had one financial plan deliberation meeting. This is our second one. We have a third one on the 24th. Those three meetings are our committee of the whole meetings and we, we tend to wrap up at a, at a council meeting. Usually the first council meeting in March. We prepare the financial plan as an entire financial plan to begin with, rather than build it from the ground up. Some communities prefer to rebuild it from the ground up every year. We build it based on council direction from the previous financial plan and since. And then council can, can make changes to that draft as we go along. We ask for council direction if there's a significant or material change that needs to be made to the financial plan or the services therein. We certainly listen to the, the thoughts and concerns of councillors throughout the process and any ways we can improve how we communicate information. However, there's substantive change to be made to the financial plan. We ask for a resolution. At the beginning of every deliberation, budget deliberation meeting, we'll go over what changes have occurred from version to version. There's about four or five changes from the last version since last, last Thursday. We'll go over at the beginning of today. So here's the remaining timeline. Initially, we were expecting to continue the operational department deliberations today, but we stayed a little bit late last week till about nine thirty and got through most of the operations. There's a couple miscellaneous operational items that I wish to discuss with council today. But in general, we'll be talking about the capital budget today. Depending on how far we get through the budget today, that, that will refine how February 24th may or may not look. It's in April through May, we bring together draft bylaws as directed by council through these, these budget deliberation. We have two tax rate bylaws that are necessary. A Parks and Rec, Parks, Recreation, Culture Fees and Charges bylaw, as well as the financial plan bylaw that need to be adopted prior to May 15th. So as an O for B to the financial plan, as the draft is right now, the five-year operating expenditures is $230 million approximately. Capital expenditures are $92 million. That $92 million figure is likely to change with the forthcoming engineering report. That report is to bring forward ideas of how the district's capital output can be increased by three to five times over the next 15 years. That's comes from council, council direction that evolved from the Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan. And so the amount of capital that we may, that council may wish to get done and maybe possible over the five-year plan will change. Of that $92 million, the funding sources include $19 million in the grant contingent funding. That's essentially your Auckland Sewer Separation Grant, which is no guarantee. $11 million in borrowing is proposed and $62 million in reserves and a small $1 million in other funding sources. So I'd just like to go over some of the rest of the financial plan. It provides broad expenditure authority, as mentioned. It's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a forecast because often the district is unable to execute all spending and the entire vision of the financial plan. So it's a maximum expenditure authority that council is approving over that timeframe. One of the major risks to changing how the financial plan looks over the next five years is the infrastructure replacement objectives of the Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan, which we estimate to be between 30 and 60 million on top of the 92 million that we discussed earlier. COVID-19 continues to be a risk mainly due to uncertainty. Certainly, we've seen COVID-19 and how it has impacted our Parks, Recreation, Culture revenues in the previous year. We've seen a rebound lately, but we don't know. That's not guaranteed. That trend isn't guaranteed. There have been supply chain issues that resulted from the pandemic, which have increased the cost of our goods and also slowed down the delivery of our services. And we've also have operational impacts, workforce shortage issues, which we talk about a little bit later here. Open Marina lease negotiations are underway right now. The financial plan right now really builds on the assumption that the model for that lease remains the same. But since negotiations are underway, we don't know how that will look when, when those are concluded. WorkSafe premiums continue to rise for a number of factors. The main factor being that WorkSafe premiums are now covering a broader providing broader coverage. So, so different and new coverage. And that's why we're seeing contribution maximums rise as well as premiums rise. As well, the district has, has a higher than average experience rating, which is something we're focusing on strategically as well. Inflation continues to be a risk to the financial plan in many ways. I touched on this briefly the last, last meeting. Over Canada, inflation was exceeding 4.2% when I spoke last time. I believe the last month-to-month annualized amount was over 5%, 5.1%. A Greater Victoria region continues to be quite a bit lower than that. And don't ask me why, but the factors continue to be quite a bit lower. But although the CPI of Victoria remains quite a bit lower, that doesn't necessarily represent the cost factors that impact municipal operations. In fact, we're seeing significant increase in cost pressures to capital expenditures, which, which of course increase the lifecycle costs of our capital and which are, which are certainly unique to our industry. And as mentioned earlier, we're also experiencing workforce labor shortages. So that's something that wasn't as high as a risk last year. I use Parks, Recreation, Culture as an example. That department would like to program additional programs, but is unable to find the staffing for those programs. So that, that represents a risk of us being unable to obtain the maximum profitability measures in that department while we struggle with that challenge. And of course, workforce labor shortages also lead to work plan capacity issues as well. Staffing folks to be able to, to see through established service levels is difficulty, but also work plan capacity in general, being able to ensure we retain enough capacity to respond to the community as council sees fit throughout the year and maintain essential operations as we go on. So on this slide, I just provide a five-year prediction for our tax rates based on known factors that we have right now. 2000 and 22, we're recommending a 5.44% tax increase. It's similar to what we had predicted in 2021 for 2022. In the 2021 financial plan, I believe we had forecasted a 5.6% taxes increase or something like that. Some of that, of course, is outside of our control. Much of that will be forced growth. So that's the natural increase in price, prices for the things that we want to maintain a service level for. That would be subject to inflationary pressures that are outside the district's control. So that increase for 2022 would be $174 to the median residential property. The median residential property would pay approximately 30, $3,381 in municipal property taxes. So that's not including school, regional and other taxes, which is approximately 925 per day. And I always like to take the opportunity to just recommend or to point out to the public what, what I consider that good value for the community, considering the broad portfolio of services that the municipality delivers to the community, which includes transportation, parks, recreation, protective services, including bylaw, policing, fire, drainage, urban forest, library and economic development. We have, of course, other services as well, which are funded through other means, such as water and sanitary sewer as well. So breaking down the proposed tax increase, it would break down as follows. Forced growth, 2.91%. Escalated infrastructure funding, 2%. That's in alignment with the Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan recommendations. It's also similar to the, the infrastructure funding growth that staff have maintained in the last couple of financial plans anyways, as well as new staffing. I believe in the 2021 financial plan, council approved new staffing to the tune of $150,000 per year from 2021 through to 2024. So you see that maintained in this financial plan as well. Later on in this financial plan, we're projecting some growth in our debt servicing costs as we, if we take on debt to pay for a new Conoverin Park building and/or North Oak Bay pump station consolidation, we would need to pay for the increased interest payments and debt, debt principal on that. In terms of our asset management funding progress, again, it's a key measure that I focus on. I, I recognize it's not the only measure that we need to focus on when measuring our success in terms of asset management. Certainly, capital output is a way to measure success. But in order to facilitate capital output, funding is something that's needed. Council has obviously invested in a rapid increase to asset management funding since in this council term. And I just, I just restrict my comments to this council term. I think it's just relevant in that way. We asked, staff estimate that in 2017, we were funding our annual infrastructure depreciation, if you want to call it, or annual infrastructure replacement costs to the tune of about 31%. And the 2022 plan gets that funding up to 70%. We get close to sustainable if this plan is maintained and approved into 2026. And we always add the caveat that these, these numbers change. These numbers were different in our last financial plan. That was absent of the information that we had now in our Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan. But of course, that plan itself isn't perfect. There's no perfect data. There's no perfect way to predict when things need to be replaced and what the cost of those things will be replaced. So this number will continue to change. I think what's important to note is whether or not we're making progress. And this, this chart demonstrates that there has been significant progress in that area. In terms of debt, I just always like to touch on debt. Debt in our, in our current budget is it's, I don't want to say minor, but it, I guess it's a minor component to the overall operating and capital budget. But certainly it's something of keen interest to the public. The district cannot exceed a debt servicing limit that's prescribed by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And there, there's also an approval to electors required, which, which basically means that council needs to I'm sorry, I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting the term, but we need to ask the electors to approve, approve that debt or have a counter petition. The exception is however, if our debt servicing remains below the 5% limit, then we don't have to do that. And there's a 30-year maximum to amortization. So even if we have assets that, whose useful life far exceeds $30 million, such as a sewer program or storm drain program, we have to finance that over a 30-year maximum. So different forms, so council needs to take that into consideration when considering intergenerational funding equity. So our debt servicing limit again is 25% of our annual controllable sustainable revenue. So what does that mean? Annual controllable sustainable revenues is stuff like our property taxes is our main component, our user fees is another thing, our building permits, our annual grants that are not conditional. So the majority of our, of our water user fees, our sewer user fees, our solid waste fees, all of those meet that definition. Most of our revenues are sustainable and, and controllable. So 25% of those revenues, that's the maximum that can be used to pay debt principal and interest. And we're nowhere near that because we haven't typically funded with a lot of debt. Borrowing is conducted through the municipal finance authority and, and we must receive support at the regional district to borrow through the municipal authority. And that creates a joint and several liability relationship with us and the municipalities in that regional district. So if for some reason we're unable to pay our debt, the regional district will and the and therefore the participants in that regional district will as well. This this framework, as well as the fact that the municipal finance authority has the legislative ability to tax on our property taxes, leads to exceptionally low borrowing costs. And I thought it would just be interesting to point out today. I was, I was watching the Fitch, the Fitch review of the provincial and the provincial debt outlook. And they had rated the following jurisdictions in the following way. You notice the municipal finance authority is leading in terms of our rating and it's got the highest credit quality out of all of those provinces. So pretty significant. French Columbia was the highest rating until recently as well. So in terms of our debt limit, we're forecasting to remain well below our debt limit in 2022. We're expecting to reach about 2.3%. And we'll go up to a maximum of 5.3% through 2026. Now, in terms of our reserves, there's a number of ways that reserves can be established. I'd just like to remind folks so that we're speaking the same language when we talk about reserves. We can establish reserves by bylaw. We have, most of our main reserves are established by bylaw. We have one consolidated reserve bylaw. It's posted on our website for anyone who's interested. We can establish reserves by resolution. So council can say, set aside that money for this specific purpose. And staff are obliged to do exactly that. We can establish a reserve by financial plan bylaw. And we've, we've done that with our infrastructure renewal reserve, which hasn't been established by a separate bylaw. We can establish reserve by administrative judgment. So the CFO can, with the CIO, say, oh, this money is going to be set aside for X within our unappropriated surplus. That's not my style. So as I've discussed with council at the last meeting, I, I intend on bringing forward some recommendations for the abortionment of our unappropriated surplus. That's just basically the surplus that has grown year after year through our financial operations and recommend that council allocate those specifically. I believe it's a should be, rightfully should be a council decision and should be a transparent process as well. There are some reserves that are required by legislation. So you might call development cost charge a reserve or our, our village parking reserve. It's established in a local government act, something that we have to do. And then there might be reserves with external limitations. So if we receive certain grants, for instance, that have limitations. So this is all of our reserves in total, about $57.4 million. Not all of that can be used for capital. Much of it is operating reserves and much of it is for capital that we need to acquire new capital with, with those funds. Take for example, your heritage and land development reserve, $2.3 million. That can only be used for for the acquisition of new capital. Your land sale reserve can be used for the acquisition of new capital. Your parks acquisition reserve, half a million dollars has to be used for new capital. So we can't take that, those funds and use it to fund our expanding capital program. In this slide, I've just modeled what we have in our capital renewal reserves. So the reserves that should be used just to replace existing capital, not buy new capital. It demonstrated, I'm just demonstrating here that based on council decision, what the relative balance can happen. So right now, the financial plan bylaw proposes and if fully realized, we would start with about $40 million in capital renewal reserves and those would fall to just over $30 million, I think $32 million in 2026 if we fully spend what's in the financial plan as it's stated right now. Now, we do have over $10 million in operating reserves. I, I think you'll find that when I bring forward recommendations for that allocation, I'll recommend that some of it get put aside in our capital renewal reserves. Again, that remains a council decision. So certainly not something that's been decided, but supposing that council did decide that, that would raise our capital renewal reserve balances from 40 billion up to 50 million, which then by 2026 would be just above $42 million. If we decided that it's more appropriate to fund some of our, our expenditures by debt, for instance, the North Oak Bay pump station consolidation, we would, our, our capital renewal reserves would fall from 50 million to just above $32 million. So that, that one decision about debt or no debt has an impact on where our reserves would show up by 2026. If we increase the financial plan by an additional $30 million. So we said we're capable of doing another $30 million in capital output and we want to fund it with existing reserves, that would essentially use up our entire reserve balance. And that includes all the contributions we make through the life of the plan. So it just goes to show the magnitude of capital replacement that is needed in this community. And I would just candidly say how insufficient at the moment that our, our reserves are. But we're, we're growing that with, every year with increase in our reserve contributions. Now note, this is modeling only. So please don't say this was, you know, the director of finance forecasted that we would be out of reserves by 2026, nothing like that. And in fact, the, the capital output increase that, that we're modeled here of $30 million. It's unlikely that we'll be able to realize that significant increase to a capital output. But we'll have a better idea when, when we bring forward that report soon to discuss capital output options. So your worship, before I, I think the next slide is actually the, the next slide is going to be the resolution I'm recommending for the Greater Victoria Public Library budget. So before we get to that one, I'll stop sharing my screen and we can invite the Greater Victoria Public Library to the chair. Unless there's questions, sorry, about the overview, then we could invite the public library.
Very much, Mr. Payne. Are there any questions of council for that review? For the second time we've seen it. So I'm not surprised. There's not a lot of hands popping up on that. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Well, thank you very much. A question through you to staff. When will we be getting some details of the pump consolidation in the north? I'm not quite sure totally what that entails.
Sure. Mr. Payne, if you can answer, or we can go to Mr. Haren.
Yes, your worship. I think it would be wise to invite Mr. Haren. We do, we are discussing the capital budget, the water capital budget today. But I believe there are more details forthcoming specifically about that project as the, the team is programming that at the moment. So yes, I would invite Mr. Haren.
Welcome, Mr. Haren. If you wanted to Welcome, Mr. Haren. If you wanted to tackle this in that water section, we can certainly do that. We'll take your direction.
Yes, thank you, worship. I, I think I can answer a, a quick answer. And then if we want to get into it more, well, now that we're talking about it, I might as well just give, give the answer. So when we first started developing, when we started developing the program, multi-year program for the water system, taking into account what we learned in the water, water distribution system master plan from two years ago. There was a conceptual ideas around some service issues in North Oak Bay, so north of Lansdowne. Things like pressure issues and, and some just design challenges where perhaps it was a more efficient way to do things and a better way to manage the system going forward. So that was the beginning of the idea of a North Oak Bay pump station consolidation. And in the meantime, last year and ongoing now, we were in the process of doing the more detailed design work to figure out, well, what would that look like and, and how would that be? So it, it's starting to look like what we thought was going to be happening there, it might be a little bit different, but we're still in the middle of doing that analysis. So bottom line is we're trying to improve the service levels up there in terms of pressures for firefighting and for, and for water to houses, but we don't actually have the final answer yet because we're in the middle of doing that design. So the capital program hasn't changed yet, but it might be tweaked in terms of what water mains, what pump stations and what to do up there. I think the final thing I'll say on it is, I, there's a, the likelihood is high that there'll be at least a, a report to council to talk about what the project is and what impacts there are when, when it's time, likely a bit later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haren. Any other questions? I don't see any. So it is my great pleasure to introduce Ms. Maureen Sawa, the CEO. And actually, why don't I do this? Why don't I hand this over to Councilor Appleton, who is our liaison for the Greater Victoria Public Library, and you can introduce our distinguished guests today, Councilor Appleton.
Thank you very much, your worship, and it would be my pleasure to do so. As council is aware and members of the public may be aware, I, I serve on the Greater Victoria Public Library board and it is my great honor and privilege to do so. It is an exceptional group of people doing exceptional work. And so I, I look forward to the visit by my colleagues on the board to the council table every year. So I really appreciate them making the time to attend. Yeah. So joining us tonight, Mr. Andy McKinnon, who is the board chair and Ms. Maureen Sawa, who's the CAO. And I also see that Mr. Paul McKinnon is on as well, who is, I'm going to forget Paul's title, but he is the master of all things finance, facilities and finance for the GVPL and very, very good at it. So appreciate that, your worship, and I will guess I will just hand it over to you to hand it over to Mr. McKinnon, to Chair McKinnon.
We're happy to do that. Welcome, Mr. McKinnon, Chair McKinnon, and a pleasure to see you again.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks very much for the invitation to join you this evening. Good evening, Mayor Murdoch, council members and staff. Thank you for inviting us to present our 2022 operating budget. My name is Andy McKinnon. I am Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board and a councillor representative for the District of Machozen. I'm delighted to be here tonight for three reasons primarily. The first is that in Machozen, I'm the Chair of our Finance Committee. And we're in the midst of our budget deliberations as well. So it's, it's very educational and entertaining to drop in on someone else's budget deliberations. It's a little bit different in Machozen than it is in Oak Bay, as you might imagine. Secondly, I, I consider some members of your Oak Bay council to be good friends. So I, I consider myself in good company tonight and I appreciate that. And finally, I would like to recognize that his worship, Mayor Kevin, is a past Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board. A position he served with distinction. So good to be here in Oak Bay tonight. With me to present this evening is our CEO, Maureen Sawa, and our Director of Finance and Facilities, Paul McKinnon. That's his title, Andrew, just for future reference. I'd also like to recognize particularly Councillor Andrew Appleton, your council representative on the Greater Victoria Public Library Board, as well as the Vice Chair of our Planning and Policy Committee. Andrew is a terrific representative for your community and an extraordinarily valuable addition to our board and we appreciate his participation. Thank you, Councillor Appleton. Public libraries provide a place where every citizen belongs. The Greater Victoria Public Library Board is committed to working with our municipal partners so that together we can build communities by providing citizens with equitable access to information, services and resources to grow and learn. You have received our final 2022 budget package. The library board and staff have worked hard to develop a budget for 2022 that is realistic and resourceful. On behalf of the library board, staff and community that we serve, I'd like to express my thanks to Oak Bay council for your continued support. We're proud of the work that we do and we appreciate your recognition that libraries do indeed change lives. And now I'll turn things over to Maureen for the remainder of the presentation. Maureen, Paul and I look forward to responding to any questions you may have. Maureen?
Thank you very much, Andy, and thank you, everyone. I'm going to share my screen and I believe we figured it out earlier, so just bear with me. I'm just hitting the right button. I'm going to go to, just wait a second, slideshow. I am sharing. Yep, here we go. Sorry. The, the bar at the top is, is preventing me from going to slide. So I'm just trying to try that now. Just hang on a sec.
If you can't reach that, Maureen, you can go to the bottom right and there's, there's the, just to the left of the slider, there's a little icon, you can click that.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Okay.
That should work.
Yeah, familiar. Okay, sorry, I just go backwards. Apologies. It did, it was working just fine when we did the dry run. Okay, I will turn my video off and then, okay. All right. Well, let's, let's get on with it. Is this, is this visible to everyone?
It is.
But not ideal, right?
No, it's odd. It's, it's your, your presentation mode.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why it's not.
Maureen, if you want, I can, I could share my screen and you could just.
That would be terrific.
Just stop sharing and I'll.
I'll stop sharing. I really appreciate that. Thanks very much. Okay.
We are here to serve.
Okay, I'm ready to go. Thank you all very much. So will, that is the slide. Okay, we'll start from the beginning. So then next slide, please, Christopher.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you all very much. It's just a delight to be back, speaking with you. And as I always like to do at the beginning of these presentations, I think it's important to, just to share the reminder that the Greater Victoria Public Library is a shared system, serving 10 of the 13 municipalities in the Capital Regional District. Within these boundaries, we also provide services to First Nations people and other residents living on the reserve lands of the Songies, Sarlet, Talat, Esquimalt and Beechworth Bay. As you know, we deliver library services through our virtual branch, dvpl.ca, and in person at our 12 physical branch locations, which are housed in a wide range of facilities, varying sizes and ages. In total, we serve a population of over 350,000 with a physical collection of close to 670,000 items in a virtual branch, which is open 24/7. And the reason I feel it's important to, to just think about that for a couple of minutes is this is a huge advantage for all 10 of our member municipalities and, and nations, because no matter how large or small, everyone has access to services, resources and collections that normally would only be available in a large urban municipal system. Next slide, please. 2021 was, was a very rewarding year as we kind of came further out of the COVID pandemic situation and unrolled our services. Our figures from 2021 are truly impressive system-wide. And as you can see, our numbers, particularly in circulation of items, really went up. But what's important for you here in Oak Bay to know is Oak Bay children ranked number one for in-person pickup registration for the summer reading club activity this year. And also number one in terms of final completion date for the system. So a lot of kids start, but you know, many don't finish. And Oak Bay children always finish. Also, what's, what's good to know is Oak Bay branch ranked number two in the system for the number of physical items circulated last year and holds place, as well as number one for holds filled. And number two in the system for the number of in-person visits, 14% total in the system. So that's quite impressive for your community and we're really appreciative of the support and your use of our, of our facilities. So in the next slide, I just wanted to show this photo of a young, a young person who literally jumped for joy the day we reopened our children's area. This past year, and Paul can speak to some of the specifics, was a year of adapting and reimagining our service delivery. Because of COVID, because of some of the things that we needed to do to ensure that we had more space available, we had the opportunity to create enhanced experiences within our physical spaces and really have started embracing the notion of flexible, accessible and inclusive environments. And this very timely, because as you know, the BCA Accessibility Act is coming into play and the fact that we've kind of had a jumpstart on, on reimagining our spaces to be more accessible is a good thing. We also provided a number of new takeaway experiences for those people that maybe weren't quite comfortable coming back into our physical branches. We're looking for additional resources beyond the digital. So we did things like scavenger hunts, take and make activity bags and other things. And I can talk about that in a minute. If you'd like to go on to the next slide, please. This is also just a continuation of what I was discussing. We spent a lot of effort and energy and resources on enhancing our online experience. So we've produced video tutorials via our niche academy, increased access to learning online opportunities and, and a number of other digital resources that are too many to kind of go through in detail. But as the next slide will demonstrate, our, our website, our virtual branch is, is open 24/7 and it's very heavily used. And the next slide, just, there's a few photos and you may recognize someone at the door, Councillor Appleton. This is just to demonstrate the, some of the ways we have changed our spaces in the Oak Bay branch and also made use of your, your beautiful park areas to do programming when we were unable to do programming indoors. The next slide is an interesting one because it revisits a perception survey that we did in 2018. We did another perception survey in 2021. It was research conducted by Justice and Market Intelligence. And as you can see, residents feel very strongly that GVPL is important to lifelong learning for people of all ages. The percentage of residents that agree we are an inclusive and welcoming situation for everyone is very, very strong. We were very pleased to see these numbers because after the year of COVID in 2020, as you can imagine, with so much service disruption, it was gratifying to know that, that our rebuild was working. In fact, as the next slide will show, we've succeeded in building back stronger. And part of our strategy to do that is the board's two-year 2021-2023 strategic bridge plan, which is focusing on our efforts around four key priorities to build on the lessons learned from COVID-19 and, and understand that COVID, as it did for so many of us, revealed some gaps. Certainly the pressure on our infrastructure because of the surge in usage of digital resources really was painful to go through. As you'll see on the next slide, that is one of the four priorities that the board is addressing for the next two years. And that's digital literacy and access. We're working very hard on transforming our digital infrastructure so that it is more robust and, and can meet the, the needs that were evidenced as, as COVID unfolded. And you're probably not surprised to know that many people who were using our digital resources now that the library is open again, we've been open for quite some time and access to physical materials has been restored. People are not giving up the digital either. So there, there's more, more for more. So digital literacy and access is something that we're focusing on. The next slide is our focus, community building, very much committed to equity-building services and programs and, and really getting a better understanding more than ever of how we can participate in community building. The third priority of our, our two-year strategic bridge plan is making a difference and showing our impact. As, as we have noted in this slide, a lot of work with staff, training, more meaningful key performance indicators. All of these will inform our transformation of our operations. And then the fourth priority is on the next slide, which is making space for everyone to be safe, respected and valued. I think this picture kind of speaks, speaks for itself. We're creating a culture of equity, diversity, inclusivity and accessibility. And again, the emphasis on engagement with the community. So one example of engaging with the community is on the next slide. Staff have developed a series of scavenger hunts and I'm pleased to see that one of our latest is about Oak Bay. Scavenger hunts are little take-home activities that encourage people to get out into their own community and explore. And we point out books and, and maybe sites in the area that would be of interest and it's kind of self-directed programming. And we are doing scavenger hunts like this for every one of our member municipalities. And this was one of the, kind of the innovative programming ideas that staff came up with when, when we were looking for alternatives to in-person programming. So now that we've told you a little bit about what we've been up to and what we're planning to do, we'll get to the, the actual 2022 budget request itself. So I can go to the next slide after this one. Thanks, Christopher. So our 2022 budget request is, Councillor McKinnon has said, you've all received our budget package for 2022. The overall municipal budget increase is 2%. That is what's requested for our municipal contribution to our operating budget. On the next slide, you will see what this means for the District of Oak Bay. The percentage contribution of each member municipality is, as always, based on the converted assessment values and population of your municipality, including rental adjustments. So with that formula in mind, this year's and the overall 2% increase for the system, it does result in an increase of 3% for the District of Oak Bay or $33,551 for 2022, which is $1.77 per capita increase. So the final slide is next, just a very good quote from Josie Osborne, who's the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And as I mentioned, last year, the libraries branch has been transferred to the minister, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And this was something that she said during library week this past October. Libraries are unique and welcoming community spaces where people of all ages and backgrounds can gather, explore interests and develop lifelong skills. And that certainly continues to be the case for GVPL. So final slide is the cover of our strategic bridge plan. And I just would like to say thank you. And Paul McKinnon is with me virtually. And he will go off mute in a minute and I can stop, we can stop sharing the screen, Christopher. Thanks so much for doing that. I really appreciate it. So we're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sawa and Mr. McKinnon. That was fantastic. So our Mr., we'll go here to council if there are any questions of the GVPL. Go ahead, Councillor Green.
Sorry, it takes a minute with the unmuting. I'll, I'll never get the hang of it. It's, it's really wonderful to see all of you again. And, and I always enjoy these presentations every year because I think it's one of the best investments Oak Bay makes in its own community. And particularly as we can see from the numbers in Oak Bay, young people and children. So really impressive. And I just wondered to anyone through you, Mayor, what some of the, the concerns you have going forward with the impacts of COVID, if any. I, I'm impressed by how well you, you, you adapted and had to pivot. But are you concerned about anything going forward? But are you concerned about anything going forward that might impact either service delivery or users? And thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I can speak to that and Paul, I'm sure will have something to add. We were both noting Christopher's comments about the challenges of recruitment. And this is something that we're also dealing with in terms of staffing. So that is, that is a concern that we have going forward. I think that is definitely one. I would say that what COVID has done is presented a lot of opportunities. It's accelerated our progress in things like digital service delivery and our use of flexible space planning. Those are both things that that we we knew we were going to be doing, but we never thought we would be doing them so fast, right? So I think that I would look at it as as kind of an opportunity. We are very pleased at the news that we heard, all of us, from the Provincial Health Office this week to open things up. So I I have to say, I'm I'm one of these, you know, making lemonade out of a lemon. Like, we really accomplished quite a bit. We were forced to. And I'll ask Paul to comment on that from a financial perspective.
Thanks, Maureen, and absolutely. It was interesting, again, to your point, listening to Mr. Payne's comments at the earlier part of the presentation, because we are indeed facing the same challenges from a financial perspective. And to your point also, there is many opportunities coming out of COVID and we were very lucky going into COVID that our balance sheet was reasonably healthy. And that, to Maureen's point, it was an opportunity to make investment back into the system, which we continue to do so now in terms of our facilities and the services we're providing. So we're very happy to be able to do that. But timely in terms of Chris's comments, because I literally had this conversation with Maureen yesterday morning, going over some of the exactly same things surrounding the cost of living, CPI increases preceding the labor market and so forth. So far, we're able to buffer those things, but it is very much a concern. And as I think I spoke last year, this very presentation, I was not so concerned about the twenty-one or twenty-two budget, but I am concerned going into twenty-three and twenty-four. And if you'll note in our five-year plan, one of the decisions that was made in twenty twenty was to take surplus accumulated from the fiscal nineteen-year in the form of contingency and pop that back into the the five-year plan in the form of a revenue boost, if you will. So the board approved the use of one point three million in reserves to prop up our our operating income through the period of twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five. You'll notice that stops in twenty twenty-six in terms of smoothing out the budget. But again, we're buffering it fairly well, but it is very much a concern of mine right now from a financial perspective. No direct impacts, but we are monitored.
Yeah, and I would just add, it also is the expectation of of our users to 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 not go back. You know, they they really like the services that were introduced as innovations. They also want us to return, resume other services. So so there is, you know, we're doing a lot. So that's certainly keeping us busy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sawa and Mr. McKinnon. Any Counselor Zelka then, Breathmate?
Thank you very much, Chair, and through you to the wonderful team with the excellent presentation. Thank you very much, Madam Sawa, and your on all the work that you're doing and and the incredible work through the library. My kids absolutely love it there. And and I thank you so much for opening as quickly as you did and for pivoting when you when you did. It was fantastic to see that we still had access to the resources. I did want to ask, this is the most important question, the carved lion in the Oak Bay Branch, will it be returning? Because my kids were so sad to see it wasn't there.
Well, we we had to make more space, to be quite frank. You know, there there were real issues with getting around and I know it, yes. Paul, do you want to answer that?
Or 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 maybe you could bring back something next year, if for some reason has to be held off for a period of time. I just wanted to know that that its absence is known.
I know, and and I want you to know that we we feel that. And one of the things that we've been looking at is is just new features, like things that can be introduced to our children's area. As you may know, the children's area at Oak Bay is is quite a bit more spacious. There there is more room, it's opened up. One of the things that Paul has been working on with library services, also the issue of noise, you know, that that we were trying to provide the young people with an area where they they weren't, you know, there was a little bit more of of an oasis for folks who wanted to sit and have quiet readings. So that that's been a bit of a challenge with the with the restrictions in terms of social distancing. So but point taken, thank you. Yeah.
Two more quick points. The I'm so pleased to see that in part of the pivot, you're trying to move some resources online and I saw the the list of, you know, LinkedIn Learning and some of the other aspects. Some of the tools I didn't even know were available. As a genealogist, boy, would it be awfully nice to get Ancestry online available from home. I know that's always a struggle for some libraries, but there are some who have been able to somehow achieve it, whether it's Ancestry or some other genealogical resource, since there's so many various databases out there. I would put a special question for something like that, and I know many in Oak Bay with certainly with the demographic here, it is, I understand it's the second most popular hobby on the internet. Don't ask about the first.
If I could just respond to that, if I may, we, ancestry.com was very generous to public libraries throughout the the whole pandemic until fairly recently. They they offered it free, like they they allowed us to have that access and to provide it. Now that that they are moving back into a different business model, Paul, who also oversees right now our collections development area, there, you're right, there is an alternative. We are looking at it. It is pricey, but I I I agree with you that it is particularly in this community. It is a very popular pastime and important. It's important. So that is one of the things that we're looking at as we put together the twenty twenty-three budget. I think that's fair to say, Paul.
Yes, it is, and exactly that. And we're looking at competing challenges within the collections budget. And if you'll note, this year, we've added almost five hundred thousand in new funds, both capital and expense. So that does cover off additional digital resources, because to Maureen's point, we offered a lot through through a massive pivot through COVID and and our patrons have been very used to those those additional digital services now. Ancestry, of course, absolutely was one of those things. We are looking at alternatives now in terms of what we can do as an alternate source for that.
Thank you. The last question is a question that I usually ask almost every year. Because of the funding model that was locked into place oh so many years ago, I see that the general increase is two percent, but Oak Bay's increase is three percent, even though our population technically fell a little bit this year. So is there any plan to revisit the funding formula so that those small, because we're we're small, but of course, many of our houses are are quite pricey and that's most likely the reason why. But I just wanted to ask if there'd be any chance to revisit the model at some point.
It's it's if I, I'll start and then ask. It is a model that, can I put it, it it kind of balances out. I don't know if you recall, but last year, Oak Bay actually had a contribution decrease of seventy-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Like, you know, that was a significant decrease. And as you know, we 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 did not increase our overall budget request last year, but it did also result in some going up and some going down. So last year, Oak Bay actually went down significantly. So, you know, it's, it is, it does seem, you know, I'll ask Paul to kind of speak to it, but I know that subject has come up since over the years periodically and and it does seem to be something that that gets.
I I I'm not getting people beating down my door, asking for it to be changed, but I do note it. And and I certainly don't begrudge the additional funds. And I, again, very much appreciate all the work that you and your team have put in to bring us to this stage and look forward to the future. I presume at some point, we'll be getting some indication of when, if 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 you would like a new building or if you would like a new branch or or how that process is going to happen. But at some point, I guess some of that will come to the table. I haven't heard anything details yet, but I I do hear rumbles now and then. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
It's safe to say they would like a new building.
We we have a service, a regional service delivery plan that we have begun to talk to, I know we've talked to your C O. So there there is definitely some proposals in there about Oak Bay and and that's something that the board, I might ask our board chair to comment on that. Andy, in terms of the service, regional service plan, the goals, because that was another big deliverable that the board achieved last year. So Oak Bay is very much in that list, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And we are going to be opening a new branch in Esquimalt, probably next month, I guess. Still working on the date for that. And look forward to working with Oak Bay to to find a new facility that can perhaps better serve the community than the current one.
A final comment is, I noticed in our Oak Bay's Sustainable Financial Asset Management Plan, I'm probably not calling it the right thing, that the number for the total life cycle cost of the Oak Bay Library and Apartments Building is rather large. So we have so many things that that are that are 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 demanding capital attention. But that's why we're in this budget process right now. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. Again, thank you.
If I might just add one more thought here, I really want to commend Oak Bay Council and staff for the the focus you're bringing to renewing infrastructure in the community. That's a that's a difficult thing to do. It's an expensive thing to do. It's a brilliant thing to do. And and I hope you appreciate that people decades from now will thank you for putting yourselves on the line for something like that.
Thank you, Chair McKinnon. Go ahead, Counselor Breathmate. Perhaps you could also make a motion to receive the presentation?
Yes, I will do that. I'll be very, very quick, because I know that everything has been said, all the wonderful things about the value that the Oak Bay Library brings to our community, and I I echo those. I was just wondering, just out of curiosity, and and Maureen, you you did touch on it a little bit, but I know that the per capita this year is one, a dollar seventy-seven, I think it was. My screen just went dark. Yeah, a dollar seventy-seven. Do we know what it was last year, just just out of curiosity? Because I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
If you don't have that information, that's fine.
No, it it was, yeah, Paul, I'm pretty sure Paul has. Paul, do you have that?
I actually don't have that information.
If you, if you, I can pull it up because I did have it in another document. But as I say, the overall contribution last year was was less. Oh, I think I have it because I always keep things. This is what about being a librarian, you know? It was, okay, per capita, it was a decrease of four dollars.
Yeah, overall.
Per capita, it was actually a decrease of four dollars. So there was no increase over the previous year.
So I think I think went from about sixty-three dollars to about sixty dollars and then or sixty-four dollars to sixty-three dollars, and then it's back up again to sixty-one forty now, per person, per year.
Yeah, according to to my chart, Paul, from last year.
My apologies.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
I see my my connection must have dropped. So I I think I heard you say that it was a little bit more, was it?
No, in twenty twenty-one, the per capita increase was actually a decrease of four dollars.
Right, okay, right, got it. That's, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Again, great value for our money. I will move receipt.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Thank you, last of seconders. Any other questions of council? I will just say thank you very much to to all of you for coming and presenting. You know, obviously, the the level of service is phenomenal. I know this has been a very difficult couple of years anywhere in the service industry, especially when people are desperate for for the connections and for the materials and for everything else that the library brings. It's, I know it's been hard to, and you, and I've seen firsthand how hard it's how hard the library's worked to try and maintain those connections, the relationships with the clients and the and finding services that meet the need. So I just want to express how much we do appreciate that. I know it's often unsung work, but it is very much appreciated in our community. So thank you for all that you're doing. And I'll, again, thank you, Counselor Appleton, for your your tremendous contributions to that board on behalf of our our council. I don't see anything else, so I'll call the question on the receipt. All those in favor? Any opposed and opposed? That carries, again, thank you very much. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So with that, we'll come back and we'll go on from the the most community-related pieces to much more presaic capital budgeting issue items. So, Mr. Payne, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Oh, I should, I should, before I do that, I'm just going to let you, let the public know, if you're watching on the live stream at about eight o'clock, I'll be just making a call out for people to call in if they wish, or if you're on the Zoom call, you can do the hand raising within the app and we'll be taking any comments or questions. And it can be related to anything in the in the financial plan. We do make that allowance at each of these financial meetings. I'll probably make another call at the end of the meeting, but just if anybody's watching, that would, if you're watching on the YouTube livestream, it would mean calling into the one eight five five number and then hitting, and once you're in, hitting the star nine to to raise your hand. That that instruction is on the agenda package. So so I just want to make that, if anybody's watching, that's the that's the plan here around eight o'clock, I'll make a call for public input. So back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Your Worship. But just to put a stamp on the the library discussions, our library services agreement asks that we approve the budget before May first of every year. So I I suggest that council pass the following solution, which I'll just resolution that I'll put up on the screen and it'll carry forward from the committee to hold to council if you so wish. Shall we, shall we?
Counselor Appleton, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. With pleasure, yes, that I would move, make the motion that the twenty twenty-two Greater Victoria Public Library budget be approved.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing any, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, that carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Payne, for the procedural piece.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just going to see if the financial plan. Okay, Your Worship, so today we'll start. We've got a few minor operational items to discuss and and then we'll get into the financial plan, capital budget. So to begin, for for those of you following online, we're going to start with the version version control page of the financial plan, which is just inside the cover there, page three, it's page seven of the agenda. I would just go over some of the changes that occurred from version one to version two. So the first change was Municipal Hall renovation project. There was a small amount to carry forward in project funding, so that's been, the financial plan's been updated with that. The transportation safety program has been increased. There's a carry forward amount in the financial plan to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. It's not a typical carry forward, so we'll discuss that more in the engineering budget when we get there. The staff were advised in early January that the district's application for funding under the Urban Dear Cost Sharing Program was successful. So we've we've increased our special initiatives budget by the total project cost, which is sixty thousand dollars, thirty of it being grant-funded and thirty of it being funded by cumulative surplus. The fourth thing is the Todd House. The district had applied to the one hundred fifty time immemorial grant for Todd House, capital funding, that's the Heritage Version. So we've included a grant contingent capital project on page one hundred of the financial plan. And then lastly, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Facilities Program has been upgraded has been upgraded in the following ways. The Oak Bay Rec Center Facilities Maintenance Program has been increased by twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and that would be for the replacement of the arena arena and indoor sports field biting, and then also the addition of a three hundred thousand dollar project in twenty twenty-six for the Henderson Court resurfacing. So we'd just like to draw attention to any changes as we go through the versions so that if there's any additional needed conversation or the public needs to follow along, that's the easiest way to do it. So the first operational piece that'll draw council's attention to would be page fifty-one of the agenda or page forty-seven of the financial plan. We received correspondence earlier this week in regards to the GBLRA budget, the Greater Victoria Labor Relations Associations, for those who don't know what that acronym is. And it related to the overall increase this year, which is expected to be about thirty-one percent for that levy. The current financial plan draft doesn't include, I would say, sufficient funding for that. It's, this levy would be about fifteen thousand dollars above. The the funding is fifteen thousand dollars short of what that levy proposes. Staff are not recommending that we rewrite the financial plan as it, in terms of the forty-four million dollar operating budget, it's minor. So it will be likely absorbed into the into the operating budget. Nevertheless, it's a, it necessitates an increase in twenty twenty-three, so. Nevertheless, it necessitates an increase in 2023, so we wanted to flag that in good faith. And then on the next piece here, that one thing that we didn't talk about last week as we talked about the corporate administration budget was a grants and fee for service here. So you'll notice a slight increase to the grants and grants and aid and fee for service budget from $176,000 to $179,000. Much of, much of that funding supports perpetual grants. And some of it supports Oak Bay Volunteer Society, which is, which is an annual grant, which council still has the option to provide for it on an annual basis. And it leaves about $77,500 in what we term annual discretionary grants. So that's basically the threshold that council uses when deliberating on grants and aid requests, which were due January 31st of this year. So I've got, I'm in receipt of all the grant and aid requests. I haven't looked at how much they are and whether they add up to that threshold or not. But generally, council sets a threshold in the budget deliberations prior to considering the grant and aid. And that's just because the grant and aid requests typically represent services that the municipality isn't in the business of providing. So instead, as a policy choice, council provides a threshold to, to supporting such services. So if there's, unless there's any questions, I'll move on to the next operational piece. Those are just some things I thought necessary to to bring to council's attention. The next piece will, would be the Oak Bay Tourism Budget, which can be found on page 38 of the agenda or 34 of the financial plan. It's not talked about specifically anywhere in the financial plan document. We have an operating expenditure limit here for 2022 of $150,000. That's based on the funding plan that the Tourism Committee has submitted to the province. So they expect to spend $150,000. And keep in mind, for the benefit of the benefit of council, this is 100% funded by MDRT tax, Municipal Regional District Tax, which is levied on accommodation properties. So basically, the two hotels in Oak Bay and also Airbnbs, they're levied a tax. Those taxes are remitted to the district, and the district must use those proceeds for tourism-related activities. And we fund Oak Bay Tourism that way. So they're limited, their operations are limited by how much tax we have available at any given time, and also by whatever upper limit council sets to their expenditure authority. So you could set a lower limit or a higher limit, but those two limits will, will impact their operations. The next thing was, last week, I believe there was a question about our bench bench budget in the Parks, Recreation and Culture Operating Budget, and the question was, why did the bench budget fall this year? Parks, Recreation and Culture staff had to look at their overall budget just to confirm. But much like Public Works, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department has many divisions. And overall, the parks' divisions remain the same. So they're funded consistently from one year to the other, but there are variances within those divisions, the benches being one of those. So the variance was, it went down in that year. The bench refurbishment budget has been less than budgeted over the last couple fiscal periods, so they thought that rebalancing was appropriate. But again, they wanted to stress that overall funding for parks' operations didn't fall. It was increased. And then the last operating piece I'll just mention, which is not encapsulated in this financial plan, would be the Business Improvement Area. Did we have a Business Improvement Area establishing bylaw? And that bylaw requires that they submit a budget to council annually, and that budget needs to be approved by council. If it's approved by council, then we tax our citizens within that within that improvement area, and we remit those funds in the form of a grant to the Business Improvement Area. We kind of treat it like a senior level of taxing authority, although it's not. So that's why it's not incorporated in this budget, because it's, it's basically another tax levy that gets, it's a flow-through to the Business Improvement Area. Your Worship, I see Counselor Patterson has a question, so I'll pause, pause there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Payne. Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and to you, to Mr. Payne. Thank you for going over these things, Mr. Payne. Just out of curiosity, could you tell me if the Oak Bay Tourism or the BIA produce annual reports?
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Mr. Payne?
Your Worship, yeah, the Oak Bay Tourism is required to submit their annual, I wouldn't call them financial statements, but certainly annual financial reports to the province. I'm, I'm required to certify them, so I work with them on that as well. As well as an annual report in terms of achieving objectives, much like the district, a financial report and an annual report. The Business Improvement Area is required as well by their bylaw to submit financial statements to council for review every year, so they do submit that to us as well.
Thank you.
Please continue, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. So now we will go into the capital budget. We'll start with corporate and mid-capital budget, which begins on page 94 of the agenda or page 90 of the financial plan. Much of this budget remains the same as last year, so staff have prepared detailed remarks. What you will notice is that the EDMR system is $265,000. That includes the carryover budget of $15,000 from 2021, so it's the same overall funding for that project. And then the website upgrade project has been increased. The scope of that project has been increased. Initially, $60,000 was proposed in the financial plan for the revamping of the municipal portion of the, of the website. The Parks, Recreation and Culture Department recognized that it's also about time for them to refresh their website as well. So that scope has been added, and they've, they've been working together to, to develop the terms of reference and the scope of work for that project in 2023. So that's why you see that increase there. We'll also note that the, the project funding has been moved forward. I believe it was originally in 2022. But in, through, through corporate planning, we communicated to council that work really would have started till 2023. So that's why, that's why the funding has been shifted to 2023 in this version. So Your Worship, because that's a small budget, I'm going to just move on to the Finance and Information Technology Budget. But again, I'm willing to, we're more than happy to answer any questions as we move along.
No, I would just ask if council has any questions, just raise your hand, and I'll make sure I stop and, and seek those as we go. And certainly, if you think of something later, we can always go back as well.
Okay, and thank you, Your Worship. And when we get to the more detailed capital budgets, I will deliberately pause as well, because there will be potentially more questions. So in terms of, again, I'm highlighting the changes in the capital budget from the 2021 financial plan. So I'm, I'm not rediscussing some of the, the projects that have already been approved. So we've got the same funding from previous year for, for the projects. Not talking about those in a lot of details. One of the changes you will see here is an increase in our network and other IT hardware budget. Last year's, I believe, was 20, the 2022 amount in the 2021 plan was $25,000, so this has been increased by $60,000. And that's for, potentially for a new phone system. What's driving that is that the support provider for our phone system has given notice of their support ending in 2022. We have a couple of options. It may not require us spending the $60,000, but those options would include going to market for new support so that if there is specialized support for the brand of hardware that we currently have, that we can extend the life, the lifespan of those, those hardwares and just invest in that support. We could invest in new hardware altogether, basically status quo in terms of serviceability and functionality. Or we could investigate the use of a cloud-based system, which would likely require new hardware as well. So the cloud-based system has a number of flexibility features, which would be worthwhile in a post-pandemic world. But nevertheless, that work to determine what's the most appropriate course of action there hasn't been done. We anticipate putting together a business case for review by the leadership team if council supports this increase in budget to determine which of those options we'll move forward with. Another notable change in the budget would be some increases in the PC replacement plan, just according to some unit rate increases. I'm sure it's, it's getting old repeating the same, the same stuff, but the, but much of the supply chain issues impacted the unit costs of our hardware. So what you see in the 2022 through 2024 increase amounts are simply, simply increases to the unit rate. So there's no increase to scope, but they are increased to unit rates. In 2025, there is an additional $70,000 being requested, and this, this does represent a change in approach to our replacement. Initially, we were replacing our PCs on a five-year lifecycle basis, and this would represent a change to a four-year lifecycle basis. So it does bring forward a lot of the costs that would have otherwise been in 2026. What we're finding is that, well, there's a lot of wear and tear after four years on a computer, but also sometimes the operating system is not compatible with the old hardware, which, which leaves some security vulnerabilities. So we were in that situation prior to our major PC fleet refresh in 2020. And we solved that. We don't want to, to repeat that. So we've brought forward some funding in, in the five-year plan there. So that concludes the Financial Services and Information Technology Plan. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll move on to the Fire Department.
Are there any questions, counsel? Please continue, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Your Worship. Fire Department Capital Plan begins on page 98 of the agenda, which is page 94 of the financial plan. So the first thing we'll talk about here is our fire truck replacements, which have been in the financial plan for a couple of years now. And I just wanted to mention some, again, some of the cost pressures related to our capital purchases. The Fire Department, they work with a bunch of their suppliers to compose what they're calling relative price material increases, and they are significant. So for instance, they're noting a very significant increase to the price of steel, 127% increase. That's significant. Aluminum is a 52% increase. Axles are 4% increase. Engine overall, 6% increase. So it certainly puts upward pressures on the budget that we established in 2020. Now, when we established the budget in 2020, we did establish it with some contingency, and we did establish it with the expectation that we wouldn't purchase those trucks for a number of years, so we had built in natural cost escalation, but not to the degree that we're seeing there. We're opting at the moment, we're recommending at the moment not to change the budgets because there's still a lot of uncertainty in terms of the procurement, and the committee that's working on the specs is working through those procurements. Even if we were to award a, a build today, I'm told that a build can take over a year, 400 days, is what I believe the fire chief mentioned. So we wouldn't be receiving those trucks until next year, at the earliest anyways, or the first set of those trucks as well. So I just wanted to note those cost pressures for council, and, and of course, with many of our capital projects, things become more clear as we work our way through the procurement process. The next item in this financial plan to discuss is the Training Prop or the CCAN-based Training Prop. It has the same project title, and we've, and we've labeled it as a carry forward, but it's really a brand-new project, I would say. So I think in the next version, we'll clarify this a bit. Previously, we had sought approval and got approval from council for $100,000 for CCAN-based Training Prop. But at that time, it was to supplement the Training Tower that existed. That Training Tower has now been condemned. So this is really a, this is really a more fulsome solution to the Training Tower plus a Training Prop that was required before. Again, we're, we're early in the procurement for this. We've been having discussions recently about what the, what the cost looks like, and what with the price of steel and other cost pressures. But I just wanted to highlight for council that, to think of this through the lens of a brand-new project for that reason. And of course, the chief is able to, to discuss in more detail, if council wishes, what that Training Prop would look like and what would it accomplish for the crew. The next item on here that we've seen a difference from the previous financial plan would be the electric pickup trucks, and that really represents their supply chain increases, especially to the materials required to build electric vehicles. We've seen an increase there, so an extra $7,000 has been added there. The mobile data, data terminals is a brand-new project, request for $20,000. But it is a lifecycle replacement of the existing data terminal. So ideally, it would have been in the financial plan to begin with, because I see, because it's, that, that hardware has been there. So we'll, we'll budget for the lifecycle replacement of that as we move along. And that would, that would conclude the presentation here, and we're more than happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. I see a question from Counselor Braithwaite, and then Counselor Appleton.
Thanks so much, and thanks, Mr. Payne. Just a quick question in regards to the electric vehicle. I know that the Police Department has an electric charger for their, their electric vehicle. Is the plan to have another electric charger for the fire side? Or, and then does that, if, if yes, then does that come somewhere in the budget as well?
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Mr. Payne?
Your Worship, actually, that's a great question, not something that I considered. So perhaps the fire chief will have a, have a better response than I would to that question.
Sure, thank you. Chief Hughes?
Good evening, Your Worship and Council. Through the chair, Counselor Braithwaite, we don't have it specifically included in the budget there. However, within, within our other existing budgets, we are looking at, at charging, and we do back on to the police side there. So there has already been discussions around a joint charging area for both fire and police vehicles.
And hopefully, you can charge it to their budget.
I, yes, they owe us a little bit for the generator.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Go ahead, Counselor Appleton.
Thank you, Your Worship. And so just with respect to, well, I guess it's the largest line item on here, which is our, our needed replacement ladder truck. I noted with some interest, and council may have also seen a recent article that was published sort of in the local news about our colleagues in Sydney purchasing a ladder truck, a ladder truck with, with very similar specifications and similar age, of a similar age to ours, managing to procure one on the used market. And, and I had no idea that you could purchase a used fire truck. Because as, as the chief has noted, these are, these are highly specialized pieces of equipment, and I understand that. In this case, the, the savings was about $1 million over and on a similar, similar price as to what's estimated here in our capital budget. So I was just wondering whether the chief could comment on, on sort of the availability of such apparatus and how a municipality would go about even, even seeking something like that out.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Mr. Payne, I'll go to you first. If you want to give it to Mr. Hughes to answer, you can do so.
Sure, actually, I think, Your Worship, through to Counselor Appleton, it's, it's probably a multifaceted answer anyway. So I'll, I'll add my perspective from the financial lens. And what I would say is that principally, and ideally, we go about the purchasing or a capital base on a lifecycle costing basis. So the initial investment for, for a vehicle is certainly relevant, and if you can save funds on the capital, that should be taken into consideration for the lifecycle costing. What we want to achieve, I would say, is a larger principle for all our purchases is that we provide the service at the service level that council wants at the lowest lifecycle cost. So that might not mean the initial investment is the cheapest or less expensive, but over the life of the, of the asset, it is. Practically speaking, for this purchase, I don't, I don't know that that has been done, that we've looked at a, a used vehicle. I think this, this build is specialized, as Counselor Appleton noted, because it's purpose-built. And that was the, sort of the design and the vision from the beginning. It's purpose-built for the services required by the community and required by our, our, our local neighborhood. and required by our local neighboring municipalities who provide fire support as well. So there's specifications that need to be developed for that. And it's also, you know, we are replacing our fire trucks to maintain our Fire Underwriter Survey ratings as well because we need to have certain age with those fire trucks. So with those considerations in mind, I don't believe it's something that's been practically considered in our approach. But I don't think that it's excluded overall. So yeah, I would ask the Fire Chief to supplement my comments.
Thank you. I think it's worthwhile. Chief Hughes?
Through the Chair, yes, Counselor Appleton, it's an excellent question. I saw it come through on numerous news feeds myself after the Sydney with such a substantial sum. It is an excellent question. So I am quite ready to, you know, to address some of the factors that go in looking at used apparatus, as well as what the aim is with our new fire apparatus. So our current replacement is based on the useful service life of 15 years in a first-line capacity and an additional five years as a second-line apparatus for a maximum of 20 years. So that service life is dictated by Fire Underwriter Survey, as Director Payne mentioned, for medium-sized cities and utilized when assessing fire apparatus for grading purposes for insurance. Our capital plan reflects this 15- and 20-year lifecycle and ensures that we do receive credit for all our apparatus. As Director Payne mentioned, this apparatus is to be purpose-built for the community and the functions that are required. So for instance, in Oak Bay, the area ladder truck, although it is a ladder truck, unlike a big city, the common functions in Oak Bay would include fire response, medical aid, vehicle rescue, hazardous materials, and public service calls, to name a few of the functions. So it's a multi-function vehicle when it's operating in Oak Bay. It wouldn't be our primary apparatus to take to a public service call, but it certainly would need to be utilized in that capacity. When developing the general specifications for our apparatus, a number of factors are taken into consideration. So apparatus capabilities, parts and service availability, and most importantly, overall reliability. To look at the used apparatus question, they're generally made by communities as a stopgap measure when there's not a developed capital replacement plan. Or there's an unexpected loss of the asset in an accident or in more rural communities where it's not feasible to fund the service level of an urban community. Some of the challenges relating to the purchase of used fire apparatus include a fairly quick loss of graded service life for underwriters' credit. So for instance, a five-year-old apparatus will have lost a third of its life in relation to the first-line grading and a quarter of its life towards its second-line grading. So that's five years of 15 and five years of 20. The compliance standards in the country, as I did note, with that other apparatus purchase, did come from the United States. In Canada, that means it would need to be recertified to ULC standards, as well as the other national fire protection standards and general standards around motor vehicles required in this country. There can be significant additional costs to be able to bring this vehicle into compliance. And I did note that there were some contingencies in this other jurisdictions area to be able to do just that. On top of this, there are continually evolving standards for fire apparatus. So these standards impact the engineering and design from the ground up as the standards come into place. So frequently, it is not feasible to bring apparatus to current standards post-manufacture. And I'll use a very simple example with one of our apparatus. One of our old apparatus doesn't have an enclosed cab. It's really difficult to bring that type of apparatus into a modern standard post-manufacture. This does pose a significant risk if the standards that need to be achieved do impact health and safety. Because as those continuing evolving standards do recognize improvements in health and safety, as well as the components overall are degrading from that year of manufacture. So in five years, even if the truck hasn't been used, all those components are already five years old. A couple of the current design and features that I'll mention that most people, well, some people may not be aware of, is the clean cab concept. And that's a suite of design features built into current specification that reduce the level of several contaminants in crew compartments and help mitigate the long-term impacts on firefighters' health. It's a critical consideration for personnel that spend significant time in the cab, especially over the course of their career in a career department. This certainly, we've never been as aware of this around surfaces and air exchanges as we have through the pandemic. A second fairly high-profile feature is around green generation. And it's really about the systems in modern fire apparatus around the engine, around secondary power sources or auxiliary power sources that, you know, help reduce emissions and whatnot of the apparatus when it's idling, when it's not being used, only being used for lighting or first responder uses, where you just need emergency lighting and don't need the horsepower of that large diesel engine. And it also reduces idling time and wear and tear on those components. So with some of those caveats around this, regardless of any challenges in looking at used apparatus, we are certainly always open to opportunities at reducing costs. And if a fully capable apparatus that fits our needs and requirements come available, we certainly would be investigating any such opportunity based on cost benefit in consultation with finance. And we are in contact with several manufacturers very frequently during the specification process. So we are in the loop. And quite honestly, if there was demo units available that they were trying to unload, it would be rather a proactive push as well as they don't generally like to keep multimillion-dollar units sitting in inventory. I hope that helps answer some of the questions and sort of explain some of the areas around used and new apparatus.
Do you, Chief Hughes? Anything else, Counselor Appleton?
Just one quick follow-up, Your Worship. And I really appreciate the Chief's input on this. So I guess it's fair to say then, just based on the Chief's last comment there, that if there is a way to look for these things and if such a unit, if an apparatus cropped up that was a good candidate and the Chief and the Financial Services Department felt would fit the bill, they would explore that option with the understanding that those options are not necessarily diverse. There's not necessarily a ton of machinery like this. But I guess what I heard was we're keeping our eyes out if something good comes along.
I guess what I heard, too.
Through the Chair, that would certainly be an accurate summary. I'm certainly a function-over-fashion person anyway, so reduce, reuse, recycle.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And who knew there was so much to the fire trucks? But that was quite informative. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. My question, and I have, this is kind of a follow-up to ones that I've asked in previous years. And that is, of course, about the portable apparatus bay for the new fire truck. And in the report, of course, this year, it does talk about the dynamics of the existing fire hall and the impact of that on the selection of the apparatus. And so, you know, my question is that, A, so the vehicles that are being purchased, I take it are equivalent to what would be purchased if they were to be housed in a modern facility. And I think it's rather disappointing that we have to go to a portable apparatus bay. I'm still interested to see how that will play out on the site and how efficient it will be. But I'm just wondering if the Chief can speak briefly about the obsolescence of the fire hall itself or the capability of our existing fire hall for modern firefighting equipment.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Mr. Hughes?
Chief Hughes? Through you, Chair. Thank you, Counselor Patterson. And I am aware of some of the inquiries that have been made before with this. So our aim with the apparatus that we're purchasing with the fire engine or pumper will fit in where our existing ladder bay is. And that will be, I'm going to say, an off-the-rack truck. That's a slightly larger bay, the ladder bay. So the pumper will be able to fit there. And it will certainly be purpose-built and doesn't have to have any, let's see, you know, it doesn't have to have any special engineering taken out on it to have it fit in the bay. So no concessions around the operational efficiency. And then with the portable apparatus bay allows us to have that fully functional ladder truck. And you may have remembered in my previous, or recalled in my previous reports, that we did have two ladder trucks over the past, served the district for 40 years. Both of them were reduced just due to the size of the fire station, reduced functionality. And on the portable apparatus bay, we were just in the midst, I just saw a small mock-up the other day regarding what it will look like as opposed to the aircraft hangar-looking-ish photo inside the budget document. So there will be something coming forward, Council, in the near future around that as well.
And just to follow up, if I might, Mayor, for the Chief. The existing fire hall, is it, for all of the equipment of a modern firefighting department, is there a lot of workarounds or modifications that need to be done to the existing building to keep it functioning for the services that are required today, albeit with a building that was built for quite different circumstances?
Through the Chair, absolutely. From crew quarters to cooking facilities, power, heating, workspace, ventilation, cooling, the station is well beyond its designed service life. And everything we do inside the fire hall, from rolling hose to cleaning gear to backing the trucks in with a couple of inches on either side of the mirror, we've become accustomed to being able to do it and implement workarounds so that we can respond to emergencies and do the very best for the community. But it is a constant exercise in workarounds for us to function in this facility.
Thank you for that, Chief Hughes. Counselor Patterson?
Yeah, that's all the questions I have. And I do appreciate Chief Hughes being so direct with those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Are there any other questions? Let's see if any of their hands up. I'm just going to make a general comment here. Well, first, thank you for this detail again and for your answers, Chief Hughes. But how much I appreciate in our Financial Plan now having the detailed explanation of all of these various capital items available to both Council and to the public, you know, to be able to go through and read ahead of time the capital asks and the rationale and the pieces. It allows us to spend time on nuanced questions instead of, you know, having to verbally or go through line by line. So just kudos to the whole team building this Financial Plan as we go through it because it really makes the number of questions at this table significantly fewer. So thank you for that. And again, I'm just going to remind the public in about 15 minutes, I'm going to go and members of the public can address Council and ask questions or make comments on any aspect of the Financial Plan they see fit at that point. And there'll be another opportunity, of course, at the next Financial Plan meeting as well. So back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Your Worship. So that concludes Fire Department. So we'll move into the Engineering Department, Engineering and Public Works, which is page 104 of the Agenda, page 100 of the Financial Plan. So again, highlighting some of the changes from the last year's Financial Plan. First change to highlight and a new, and a slight change from actually version one of our Financial Plan this year is the Todd House improvement. The majority of this is carryover funds. I believe it was $363,000 was the original budget last year. Some of those funds had been spent. The project has been further scoped out. And so staff are recommending a $483,000 project budget. Now, keep in mind, last year, we simply pegged the capital project budget to the funds that were available in the Todd House trust. So it wasn't indicative of what we actually thought these improvements would cost. It was just indicative of the Todd House trust funds available. So if Council were to approve this, we actually need to use different funds, not just the Todd House trust funds. We would use what we have in that trust and then some from infrastructure renewal reserve. So it sort of demonstrates that current use of the Todd House heritage property isn't self-funding, not that, I don't think anyone expected it to be self-funding. But that's certainly the case because the deferred maintenance construction piece here exceeds what is accumulated over a number of decades in funds. Now, Council will be in receipt of a fulsome report on this project on the February 28th Council meeting. So if you want to ask questions today, by all means. But you'll have an opportunity to have a much more fulsome discussion on this project in February 28th. This other line item here, Todd House improvements, the grant-dependent, pardon me, would not be spent unless the district was successful in a grant. And those improvements would focus around preserving heritage value, as is outlined in one of the condition assessments that Council was in receipt of, I believe in last year or the year before. Time is flying. The next item here, which unfortunately, we've put into the schedule, but we've failed to put a description in the Financial Plan below. So I apologize for that. That's my oversight. So I'll make sure that that description for this project appears in the version three of this Financial Plan. This would be a feasibility study that comes out. It's some of the first actions that come under our facility master plan work, which is underway right now, but is prioritizing what work we think should be prioritized in all the facilities in the district. So the fire hall and the police station is one that would be prioritized. The intent would be to assess the future requirements of these facilities and develop options for renewal or replacement for Council to consider. So that's what that new project would fund. The next project here, which is new, would be the Asset Management Software scoping. So this would not be the full cost of asset management software. It would simply be the cost to scope out and determine the needs assessment for that. And, Your Worship, the functionality of asset management software would be more than just an inventorying of our assets. But it would also need to model replacement costs, useful life. It would model capital spending prioritization. The software would need to integrate with our budget process, our accounting ERP system, our work order management system and our GIS system. So a very complicated software. And the cost of that software has not been determined because that would be determined through the scoping. Your Worship, I noticed that Counselor Patterson has a question. Do we want to pause throughout? I am more than happy to do that or wait till the finish of this schedule. There is a lot to go through this schedule, so I'm happy to pause throughout.
Sure. Counselor Patterson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Payne. You're very observant going through this. Just on the feasibility study for the fire hall, I am just wondering if you could also just speak to perhaps the anticipated schedule of when that would be done and when a report might be anticipated to come forward, if that information is available at this time.
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll have to ask my colleague, Director Haran, to answer that question.
Sure. Welcome, Mr. Haran.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. That's a great question. And right now, I think the aspiration would be to have it done before the end of 2022. If the budget's approved as it's in front of you now, that would mean I would start the procurement activities. the procurement activities, so set the requirements for what the study is and what the deliverables are, go out for, in terms of requests for proposals, choose a consultant and get started on the work, so likely, we'd have, if we're fast, we'll have a preferred proponent selected by May-June, so it's probably, we'll probably have a good chunk of it done, but likely, like the facilities master plan, we'll probably push into a bit of 2023 before we're finished that work, but we're always trying to push fast and then, but be realistic at the same time, so ambitiously, I'd like to have it done this year, but I'm not sure that it's achievable.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mayor, and, you know, I know that there have been a few municipalities that have recently completed fire hall, either renovations or rebuilds, so I think there must be some consultants around with very, very up-to-date information, so hopefully that will benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patterson. I might just do a follow-up question to that, Mr. Payne, do we have a sense of the scope of that assessment, because there's a couple of aspects, there's the standalone options, there's building it into another larger building and sort of covering those costs within that, there's obviously options for different sites potentially within the municipality, what is the scale of that? I'm looking at the number, I'm assuming it's a fairly comprehensive look at options for new facilities for fire and police?
I get it, Your Worship, I believe that the scope would include all of the things that you just mentioned there, and, but I would ask Director Haran to correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, I do believe that it would be quite wide and broad.
Mr. Haran?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, the intent here is to be very comprehensive, and I say that first, but I'm a bit vague, and that's because we're still at early stages in trying to define how far we can go, but I'll say this much, within the next two years, we have to take, we really feel like we need to take the steps required to do the investigations, be able to talk publicly about what the options are for things like you mentioned, sites, what the facilities could look like, whether they're combined facilities or separate, you know, and all of those ins and outs about what it could look like, and then engage the public as well, because there's a whole aspect of what does the public need for this service and this facility and all those things, so whether or not that whole thing, and all of that builds into being able to come back to the council with an ask, which is a decision of, here are the options for this facility, we think a project needs to be created to go do this thing, and which one will it be, and so you need to have the full information, so it is a significant study, but the intent here is to get to the point where council can decide on what's going to happen and what the timeline's going to be for that, so that's part of the reason why I'm saying I don't think it's something that we can finish before the end of the year, but we can certainly get started in a big way, and whether or not the public engagement part is included in this $100,000, I'm not sure yet, so there may be further budget asks, but that's part of starting, and it's part of defining the scope for activities like this.
Thank you, Mr. Haran, thank you for that. Back to you, Mr. Payne, to continue through this, and again, if people have questions as we go, we can raise your hand, or we'll see questions at the end as well.
Thank you, Your Worship, again, focusing on items that are new or appear differently than the 2021 financial plan, the next item is the transportation safety improvements carryover, I'm calling it a carryover, it's not a true carryover in the sense that the project, the program budget for this program was not underspent in 2021, but what had happened was, there was, as you're aware, the Balcker Creek intersection improvements, and that was primarily funded by developer contributions, so however it happened, we had programmed out a full $500,000 of additional transportation safety improvements for 2021, which didn't include the $200,000 for Balcker Creek, so we really want to be able to complete those program items in 2022, as well as complete the 2022 program items, which is why it's there. Now, if council doesn't support that, we would simply remove some of the projects in our 2022 program and bump them into 2023 and so on and so forth, but just to keep pace with what we set out to do in that program, as was provided in the asset management update, that's why that funding is being requested there.
Thank you, and thanks for splitting it like that for the clarity, go ahead, Councilor Zelka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just clarification, are we talking about Baker Avenue upgrade or Baker Creek? I understand the developer did provide some...
Baker Avenue, correct.
Avenue, yeah. Not the Baker Creek, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, please continue, Mr. Payne.
Yes, and thank you for that clarification, I know I did say creek, so I appreciate that. Yeah, so moving on, the next item which appears definitely is the Uplands Sewer Separation Project, as council's probably aware, because we've mentioned it a couple times, we were unsuccessful in our second application for that program last year, and there's a new program that's opened up that's due this month, so we'll be submitting a grant for that. As part of the grant application process, we've refurbished our cost estimates, and the cost estimates now are, excuse me, are $25.6 million in total, that's up from $23 million, which increases our net contribution from $6.2 million to $6.9 million, so a $700,000 increase to our portion of that project, and again, it's subject to grant approval, so if there isn't any grant approval on the third application, likely have to ask council for really big-picture decisions on that project. Council will recall, I believe in December, that we changed the funding source for our contribution to gas tax to the infrastructure renewal reserve, so that's what, that's one of the pieces that changed here. Your Worship, I see Councilor Zelka has a question, so I'll pause there.
Go ahead, Councilor Zelka. Oh, no, hand is just left lingering, go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. On the next item here, which is actually a mistake, a duplication in the first draft, is the active transportation program design, this was actually incorporated into the special initiatives project schedule, so it's appeared twice in the financial plan, so I'll just correct that for the next version with my apologies, and we will have that somewhere in the financial plan at the end of the date.
Councilor Appleton, and then Councilor Patterson?
Councilor Patterson was before me, Your Worship.
Doesn't, just go ahead, Councilor Appleton, that's fine.
Just with respect to the active transportation program item, just wondering whether, through you to staff, whether or not similar to your question, in terms of timelines and sort of target timelines as far as doing the program design pieces outlined here?
Mr. Haran probably is best suited to answer that question, Mr. Haran?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, so the council resolution related to the active transportation program options analysis was to have a report in front of you for decision-making by Q3 of 2022, and then, and that's what we're shooting for.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, if I can back up to the Uplands Sewer Separation, I noticed in the lifecycle costing on that, that it adds 1.26% to taxes kind of forever. Is there, will you be speaking at some point in time throughout the budget process here about any offsetting savings that it produces, because the increase of the lifecycle costing is considerable on the Uplands Sewer Separation, so just wondering if there will be any comments on that as we progress through the budget?
Thank you, Councilor Patterson. Mr. Payne, I'll go to you, may I hand it to Mr. Haran?
Yes, Your Worship, and I appreciate council asking about the lifecycle cost, because that's what, that's the prime example of the lifecycle approach that we're taking to new capital, and correctly points out that by building this new capital, there is a tax increase expected to pay for the additional maintenance, because there's more pipes essentially, as well as the replacement costs of those pipes in the long term. We took a conservative approach to the Uplands Sewer Separation lifecycle costing and assumed that there would be no offsetting reduction, we figured better to take that conservative approach. Now, of course, our treatment costs, our operating treatment costs through the quarry liquid waste treatment plant, I think I got that right, are based on sewer flows, so if we reduce infill infiltration and storm flows through that system, by separating the system, our flows will go down, and the proportionate share of that treatment will also go down, so there will be some savings there. I haven't modeled that, to be candid.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Councilor Patterson?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, though, on that, obviously, we're going from one pipe to two, one very old pipe to, one old pipe and one new pipe, does that, you know, just the maintenance costs of dealing with a new pipe change the lifecycle cost comparison, if we're, for example, if you're, is it really replacement cost, is that the primary thing counted in lifecycle, or is it all the maintenance over the life as well?
Your Worship, the lifecycle costing analysis would take into consideration both of those, I would, if you want an answer in terms of what the existing material is and whether or not the maintenance falls with the new material...
No, 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 that's not, budget discussion, let's just stick to the high level on those, thank you for that clarification. Please continue, Mr. Payne.
Great, okay, and so the next item that appears definitely, although the funding sources remain the same, is the Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. We had previously provided this in great detail to council and the public in the form of a schedule, you know, I kind of used my judgment in preparation of the financial plan to determine that that wasn't adding a lot of value, but I didn't get any interest, I guess, in the specific equipment that was being replaced, and keep in mind, there's a particular rule set around the replacement of our vehicles, so we're ensuring that we're always replacing like-for-like, we're not expanding our fleet or expanding the service that it provides without first checking in with council, because we've based our forecast for replacement of these vehicles on the existing fleet, and it's self-funding, it's self-funding, so essentially, the fleet is, for lack of a better term, rented out to the departments, and the cost of that is integrated into those departments, and so every year, for instance, I'll just use an example, part of the fleet will be used by the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department, they'll pay into the cost of the replacement of that vehicle, as well as the maintenance cost of that vehicle, it goes into the pool, the pool replenishes itself, and we use that pool to fund the replacement of the vehicle, so it's self-funding, and it's limited by how much funds we have in that reserve, and we increase the equipment pool charge out rate if we need to replace that. So we've condensed the, we can condense the details there, we can provide the details at a moment's notice, and so, and if I get feedback from council that didn't like that, then I'll certainly make adjustments as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne, I go ahead, Councilor Nay, then Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Payne, on this one, and the explanation there about how that rolls out over the years, the question I have has to do with, I was wondering how in the purchase of this equipment, considerations are made for non-carbon emitting fuel-run vehicles? Is that part of the consideration, or are there opportunities there to build a fleet with an electrified kind of fleet?
Thank you, Councilor Nay, Mr. Payne, do I take that, or should I give it to Mr. Haran?
Your Worship, I think perhaps both of us, I'll start by commenting that our standard tender process, RFP process, can and often does take into considerations such as that, mind you, it, you know, there is limitations in terms of providing best value, sometimes we will ask council, as we did in the case of some of our parks equipment, we asked, do you want us to transition to a non-gasoline-based fleet if it requires a higher cost? And the answer was, no, let's transition over time if we can maintain the same cost. So council can provide that direction, some broader guidelines for, but you have to, council essentially has to be willing to bear the additional cost, if there is one, to do that, so I would say that there isn't a mandate to transition to non-gasoline vehicles if the overall value to the district goes down in terms of cost, and yes, perhaps Mr. Haran would like to supplement my comments.
Sure, thank you, and over to you, Mr. Haran.
Yes, thank you, Worship, I think this is one of those times where we definitely have an aspiration to move in this direction, for a lot of our vehicles that we currently have in our fleet, that we are replacing and managing, and from a lifecycle basis, I'm talking about things like dump trucks and backhoes and larger vehicles, there's just not, there's no opportunities at the moment to factor electric vehicles into those requirements, but as we go, as we go, as the technology improves and as we go forward, there are some opportunities that we'll start to look at in the coming years, for example, there's some just standard vehicles that we use for things like by-law enforcement and getting staff around to do site visits and so on, which potentially could be moved, we could look at that, like setting the requirements for the replacements for those as electric vehicles. Now, there's infrastructure that would go along with it, so there's a bit of work that isn't normally work that we do, that would have to go along with it, but I think we're looking at that and might be something to add to our work plans in the coming years to try to modernize our fleet a little bit. I guess I just want to reemphasize the point, though, that fleet management is something that we do, but is a little bit off the side of the desk, we don't have a dedicated fleet management kind of function or people, so if we're doing what we've done regularly and we're not increasing the fleet dramatically or changing requirements significantly, then we manage that workload within our regular operating days, but if we have to add, you know, significant changes to specification requirements for vehicles that we're going to procure, it becomes a lot more work, and it's difficult to squeeze that in with our work plan without changing resources to try to tackle that. Thank you.
May I just have one other point, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
Thank you for that explanation, and I do appreciate the complications you have to consider in addition to electrification aspirations, but another question is, when there are considerations of, let's say, a vehicle that is probably more expensive if it was electric versus a gas-fuel vehicle, is the decision based on just this vehicle versus that, or would there be some kind of consideration of the amortization of the cost of the vehicle versus the savings that would be achieved by using electric versus gas? So like, and over a certain period of time, I guess the longevity of the vehicle, I would presume, like, is that a formula that would be used in considering the purchase of a potential, where there is an opportunity in the purchase of such a piece of equipment or a vehicle?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Nay, I mean, we obviously do lifecycle costing for big capital projects, Mr. Payne, how much does that play into this kind of acquisitions for vehicles?
I guess, Your Worship, and an excellent question, and again, to demonstrate, I think, what the question is pointing out, is that, you know, you may be able to purchase a gasoline vehicle for a lower initial investment, but you have to pay for gasoline through the lifecycle of that asset, and perhaps there's more maintenance, and perhaps the vehicle doesn't last as long as its electric counterpart, so when making the purchase and awaiting the financial score, you would want to take into consideration the lifecycle cost, which would take into account exactly what Councilor Nay was pointing out.
Thank you. I think it's fair to say that the council would like to, you know, to always test the market on these pieces, and maybe it's as simple as putting in any RFP for a vehicle, you know, you know, please include any low-carbon or no-carbon vehicle alternatives as well or something, just so that if people have something that may be a bit borderline, a bit more expensive, but might be an appropriate replacement for the like-for-like, could at least, you know, we could leave it to the proponents to bring forward any of those changes as they happen, so not really part of the budget discussion, but I think it's an important part for us to try and get to our net zero here as a community. I think that's, anything else? Your hand is still up, Councilor Nay, is that noted, okay, back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, your worship, that will conclude the Engineering and Public Works presentation. So we're moving on to the final department, but a significant department nonetheless.
Before you before you scroll down, I'm going to do two things. One, invite the public at this point. If you wish to address us, please call the 1-855 number and hit the star nine to raise your hand. And of course, if you're a member of the public and you're in the Zoom call and you want to, you can hit the reactions button at the bottom and then hit the raise hand, and that'll pop up on the screen as well. And we'll take any questions of the public at this time. And it can be related to anything on this agenda item that we need to give about a minute or so for the for the delay time to propagate through YouTube and then time for people to call in. So as we have those two minutes, I have a question to Mr. Haran on the McNeil Bay, McPicking Point, Fourshore Erosion Migration piece there. I guess my my general question is on the on the studies that are contemplated for this year, and I'm super happy to see it there. I guess I just wanted to confirm that that evaluation, looking at solutions, is looking more broadly than just buttressing the erosion, but it's looking at options for erosion stopping, like, you know, whether it's ocean ocean modification, resloping of beaches, things that are, you know, more naturalization of space. Like, it's a broad look at those erosion mitigation pieces. Is that is that a fair comment or description?
Yes, thank you, worship. I think that's a fair description, yes. Back in roughly 2014, a year or two after the the significant erosion event that that occurred at McNeil Bay, the district commissioned a study to do an initial, like, a very brief options analysis of what could happen. And so those would look like, you know, do you extend the seawall all the way along? Or do you do some kind of a new green shores treatment or other kind of techniques that that wouldn't be as a hard engineering seawall type of thing? And that's where some of the initial cost estimates came from, which informed the the initial decisions on the on the reserve contributions that were made over the years since the beginning of that time. So now it's around exploring those more fully and being able to flesh them out more. So what would they look like? What would the scope of potential projects be? And and start trying to develop an opportunity for the council to to review the options and make some decisions about how to address that issue there. And I think that one of the biggest questions is is going to be how big the project's going to be. Because there's the issue that of the the beach there, the bay where it's not protected, but then there's that whole seawall as well, which was not contemplated in the original study. So there really does need to be, I think, a holistic approach for what should happen at McNeil Bay, both in the short term and the long term, and have those discussions publicly to talk about how to how to to care for that that part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. And I'm taking from the budget in this year, the expectation is that work could be done this year and come back to council sort of towards the end of this year or perhaps early in next year. Is that sort of the timelines contemplated?
Yes, that's correct, your worship. It's very similar to the, I think I answered a question a bit earlier on. Oh, I can't remember which it was now. I think it was fire health feasibility, the same kind of steps in the process. So we have to define the requirements, to put together a request for proposal, engage some consultants and start doing the work. And again, if things move quickly and smoothly, then then we're having it done before the end of the year. But I think the key here is to have, you know, to be transparent about what the expected costs are going to be as a minimum for development of the options in the initial design phases. That's where the $80,000 comes in. And then as a minimum, a rough order of magnitude cost for what what the solution might be, at least for the initial portion, which is where the 1.2 million comes in. And then if there are other things that the community wants to do in terms of expanding the scope, doing more potentially there, including, for example, if there if there's ideas about changing what beach drive along that stretch looks like in terms of wider sidewalks, that kind of thing, that those would be extra costs, but things that could be contemplated at the same time. So those will all kind of change what the expectations would be about costs and so on. But those can all be talked about and defined, and that's what the initial options analysis phase of a project is is meant to do, is capture what the community wants and see how we can solve some problems and and move forward effectively.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haran. Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And through you to Mr. Haran. And Mr. Haran, thank you so much for speaking to this. One of the items I wanted to ask about, and it would probably fall under fourshore infrastructure, possibly, or fourshore erosion mitigation, which I know is McNeil Bay and McPicking Point. But I was just wanting to ask about the Esplanade. I walked there not that long ago. I hadn't been down there for quite a long time. And I was just wondering, are there plans in place to refurbish some of that area? I'm thinking specifically of the sidewalks, some of the lamp standards. And then also, the there is a runoff through a metal pipe there that looks like it. It needs a bit of work, and I just wondered if there was a plan ahead for that. Because I know, as we all know, it's highly highly used by the the public. And so it was the Esplanade that I was just just curious about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Mr. Haran?
Yes, thank you, your worship, and thank you for the question. I think there's a short-term answer and a potentially longer-term answer, and the financial plan reflects a bit of the short-term answer. And I'll explain what that means. For quite some time, I think there was a minimum amount of maintenance that occurred for things that we call fourshore infrastructure. So that would mean the light standards, the the guardrails, the concrete works, the pathways, things along the Esplanade and other places in the community that are along the shore. And and in the last year or two or three, the team, we've been identifying the need to have some capital funds available to deal with what we would call unexpected emergencies. So this would be things that break suddenly, such as, for example, we had a portion of the sidewalk along McNeil Bay last year that cracked, and it was due to undermining underneath a structural issue that we had to deal with right away. So these are, this is, you can look at this as emergency or unexpected corrective maintenance around the fourshore that we have to deal with, just to deal with the problems that that pop up inevitably. So that would be the guardrails and the light poles and so on. And then we want to follow that up with some longer-term plans around how to refurbish areas like the Esplanade for some of the things you've raised, but those aren't quite on the radar yet because we just have to spend our time. We have to focus on on the bigger issues first, knowing that we'd love to do it all. But I think those other projects will come a little bit later unless the failures occur more more suddenly and then then they pop to the top of the list in terms of dealing with the issues. That's the challenge with having so much deferred maintenance. You have to risk-manage your projects. And and then as as things occur, then it pops to the top of the list. And then we do our best to to get to things as quickly as we can.
And I really appreciate the efforts that are made, and thank you very much, very much, Mr. Haran. I think for those fourshore areas especially, they're they're really vulnerable to weather events as well. And I know it must be very difficult and challenging, especially during the winter, to keep up with some of that. But I, you know, I just wanted to make sure it is on the radar radar, and it appears to be, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Before I jumped in there, I did ask for people for the public, anybody wishes to speak? I don't see anybody on my screen. Perhaps I'll go to Ms. Williams. Is there is there anybody in your system and our system that I can't see that might be indicating they wish to speak?
Thank you, your worship. No, you're able to see what I can see. There's nobody from the public.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Green, you still have your hand up. Thank you. Just to get down. And go ahead, Mr. Payne, you may continue.
Oh, thank you, your worship. We're scrolling through as well the sewer and water budget. Now, I actually haven't put any discussion points together for for these budgets tonight, simply because there's no there's no change. The presentation might look a little bit different, but the the amounts approved in in this financial plan were approved in the 2021 financial plan. So and furthermore, when the Engineering Department comes back in quarter one here to talk about capital output, it will primarily focus on sewer, water, storm main rehabilitation, as well as paving. So, you know, we're going to have a much more fulsome conversation about that anyways. Same goes with the with the water capital budget. So any of the numbers included in the water or sewer capital budget are either previously approved or carry-forward funds from the previous year anyways. So I'm going to scroll through that, but by all means, if we need to come back, if there's anybody that wishes to speak about any of those, more than happy to do so. So we've arrived then at the Parks, Recreation and Culture Capital Budget. It's on page 112 of the agenda, which happens to be on page 108 of the financial plan. Similar to the Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Replacement Program, we've we've summarized the Parks, Recreation and Culture program, various programs on a higher level as well. So, for instance, instead of, you know, last year, we did create the presentation so that there was a number of different programs, your facilities program, your parks replacement program, and your vehicle and equipment replacement program. So those three primary programs still exist in in the plan. However, not every single project within those programs is identified separately here. So, for instance, when we start with the Facilities Program, you will see that the facilities maintenance is summarized by location. So Oak Bay Rec Center will be here, Henderson will be here, Monterey and Parks will be here. Any project, this is sort of the rule of thumb, any project that exceeds $200,000 is separated for council consideration. But if there's a number of small projects that make make up this program amount, they're not specifically identified on a line-by-line basis. Now, we do mention in the body of the text what some of those program amounts pay for. You just don't see specific dollars values for for every single project. So again, focusing on some of the things that we that that have changed since the last financial plan, we will start with here, the Carnarvon Park building design. This was previously not included in the Facilities Program. Yes, it existed. It is a separate project. So it's just simply been moved to a to a different place. So no, no change to that as well. We have Oak Bay Rec Center Facilities Maintenance for 2022 at $116,500. There was some addition to that from the previously approved financial plan in 2022. The major component of that is $80,000 for Courts Three and Four Bubble Resurfacing. That's the tennis courts resurfacing. As well, in 2026, you'll notice, because 2026, of course, is a new year in the financial plan, we're proposing $359,000 in Oak Bay Rec Center Facilities Maintenance. The main components there include the exterior painting of the entire rec center, as well as the fitness center flooring that will need to be replaced. Those are the major differences that that appear in this in this program. So the next program that we have is the Vehicles and Equipment Replacement for Parks, Recreation and Culture, which is found just below here on page 113 of the agenda.
Before we get to that, Counselor Briefway just has a question.
Sorry. Thanks, Mayor. And just just out of curiosity, Mr. Payne, I know that the we have the money in the budget carried over from last year in regards to the parking lot rehabilitation. But can you just tell us, because I know that it was stopped last year or the year before because of the Belker Creek stability considerations, can you just tell us perhaps where we're at with that and whether we think this will actually go forward in 2020?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Briefway. Mr. Payne?
Your worship, I think that question is probably best answered by Director Haran. Also, Director Herman is available to to answer as well, but I've forgotten the the stage, what stage we're at with that project.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Haran?
Yes, thank you, worship. I think the the amounts in the budget for to signify and to recognize that the task of paving the the parking lots was not completed for for reasons that are described. But the go-no-go for this year hasn't hasn't occurred yet. So Director Herman and I need to put our heads together in the near future to talk about what the options are. But I I think based on the way the financial plan process works, it makes a lot of sense to put it in there and say, you know, if you don't put it in there, then it's not happening at all. So but there is other steps that we have to follow before we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Director Appleton? Counselor Appleton, sorry?
I think I've given a promotion. Thank you, your worship. Just I think I've asked this question before, and so I apologize for repeating myself. But just with regard to the projected Monterey roof replacement for 2025 in this in this plan, is that, does that constitute the entire Monterey Center complex as it as it is, including the library and the the private living areas as well? Like, it's the it's the entire roof of the entire building? Question mark?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Mr. Haran? Or perhaps Mr. Payne I should go to? He can delegate.
Thank you, worship. Your third your third instinct, Director Herman.
Oh, Director Herman. Okay, Mr. Herman. For those watching, this is our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Welcome, Mr. Herman.
Thank you, worship. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. And yes, through you to Counselor Appleton, that that is the entire roof.
Thank you.
Anticipated.
All right. I think that is. Any other questions at this point? Why don't you continue then, Mr. Payne, on the on the vehicles?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it's vehicles and equipment. So there's a there will be a lot of equipment included in here as well. Again, focusing on some of the major changes from the 2021. In 2022, we have the Oak Bay Rec Center General Equipment at $227,000. A major component of this is the Bubble Bubble Three Heating, which is estimated to be $165,000. So that that accounts for the majority of the change. As well as in 2024, we have a $216,500 budget. Much of that is air handling units and kitchen exhaust. And there's air handling units integrated into much of the the plans moving forward 2025 as well. And in 2026, you'll see there's heat exchanges, auxiliary blowers for tennis, a new truck and an air handling unit in in that that budget right there. And that's really the majority of the the new projects that appear in this in this program. So the next program for, under the Parks, Recreation and Culture Capital Budget, would be the Parks Parks Program found on page.
Before you go there, Mr. Payne, if I may, I just, as a general question on this, I know Parks, Recreation and Culture has, for the most part, done an exemplary job of of putting aside money and reserves to fund these sorts of capital pieces. And periodically, we get grants, and, you know, obviously, for the chili, we've got the grant for the majority of those costs. Is there anything here that we, as a governance level, should be sort of keeping an eye on in terms of our our reserves to expected costs? Are we meeting those? And or if we get significant grants like that for half a million dollars, does that change our reserve policy or approach on some of these items?
Yes, thank you, worship, for the question. I would say, for the most part, the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department funding has provided for the replacement of its equipment in large part. And so they planned well for for its equipment. But really, what's not contemplated in the Parks, Recreation and Culture fees or the transfers to reserves thereof are major building component replacements. So a lot of these funds are supported by general reserves, such as our infrastructure renewal reserves, much like those funds would be used for any of our facilities or any of our other infrastructure. And so there's there's certainly the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department Budget isn't funding the full cost of all of its capital replacement. And that's not unique to that department whatsoever. Many of the other departments have, don't directly fund the capital replacement. I just think of Public Works, for example, our solid waste fee doesn't necessarily fund the replacement of the vehicle. So it's not it's not full cost, but it is accounted for through other general transferred reserves.
Thank you for that. Just a follow-up question for that, then. Is there a dividing line for what is contemplated within the Parks, Recreation and Culture Reserve Policy or Process versus the the broader? So is it sort of building envelope is and outside is is general and internal operational equipment is is Parks and Rec? Or is it that clean the line?
Your worship, I would I would answer that, incidentally, that's almost exactly what has occurred, whether or not that's a formal intent. has occurred, whether or not that's a formal intention or not. But that's certainly what has occurred. As I mentioned, most of the internal features are, you know, the Parks, Rec and Culture Department has an excellent facilities management function, and so they're able to plan for that and have, and therefore we funded it. And so but the major infrastructure pieces, you know, we only really started looking at a five-year plan for those last year. And so they haven't been funded. And the way that you've subjectively described those lines, I think, would incidentally be correct.
Close enough. Okay, good. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, worship. So this is the Parks and Playground Program Budget. I'll note a mistake in the display of how the chart is. This is my apologies. This is completely conversation between me and our communications consultant. These are specific projects, and I'll go through what these projects are. They're labeled incorrectly in this financial plan version, so we'll update that. So this first line, this is total facilities program, is actually the Carnarvon Park Tennis Court Resurfacing, $89,000. That's a carryover from a project that was directed by council last year. This second line, this is total vehicle and equipment replacement program, is the Henderson Kiwanis Playground for $150,000. The Parks, the thing that's labeled as Parks, Rec and Culture, Parks and Playground Program is actually the Windsor Playground for $200,000. And then the last one here is supposed to be the Lafayette Park for $70,000. None of those are new in the financial plan. Given that 2026 is a new year, the Henderson Court Resurfacing is a new project that's been integrated there. Everything else existed at these funding levels previously. So again, apologies for that display error. We'll get that fixed up for the next version. And that really concludes the Parks, Rec and Culture Capital Plan.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Are there any other questions on this or any other items that council wishes to ask of Mr. Payne? I do not see any hands popping up. I'm just going to ask the staff, Ms. Williams, has anybody else from the public indicated they wish to speak in the intervening time?
No, your worship, nobody at this time.
Okay, I'll just, thanks. I see a couple of hands up, so I'll just go there. I just want to remind the public, though, if they are interested in providing feedback to council, you can email obcouncil@okbay.ca. Just refer to the budget, and it'll get to us as part of the consideration. And of course, you can call in at the next scheduled budget meeting, which is scheduled for next Thursday, another special committee of the whole. With that, I'm going to go to Counselors Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair, and through you to staff. Fabulous report, very, very clear. And I have a sense we're going to be winning another award. We'll see what happens in the year to come. With respect to many of the plans that have been done and that will be done in the next year, in particular with those plans that have the word mitigation on them, I do note that the province is in the midst of expanding some of the emergency program acts to include and entail mitigation effects that touch upon landworks and engineering aspects. I presume there'll be grant opportunities coming up, most likely through UVCN. And I presume that some of these reports will lead to grant applications. I'm sure staff is going to be watching for that. And I just wanted to, if they hadn't noticed it already, that there certainly will be potentially opportunities coming forward to assist us in these areas.
Fantastic. Thank you, Counselors Zelka.
One final question, if I may, please?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
It had to do with the solar system on the roof of the Parks, Rec and Culture Building, probably Henderson, not Henderson, is it Henderson? Or it could be the solar system. Just was wondering the state of the system now and what's, if there's any ideas as to what that $700,000 might be looking for in five years' time or four years' time.
Sure. Mr. Payne, we're going to give a brief overview.
Your worship, in terms of the condition of the system right now, I would ask Mr. Herman to comment if he could.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, how was our 40-year-old hot water system?
Your worship, it's starting to show its age, and that's why we're looking at a potential replacement and upgrade. It's not functioning as it once did. There are cells that are not functioning at all. It's in need of replacement.
Okay, thank you. Counselors Zelka, anything else?
No, that's fine. That's fine. I'd love to go up on the roof one day and take a look, but obviously, yeah, that's not possible. So thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Counselor Day.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, through you to staff, you know, throughout the pandemic and people exercising outdoors a lot more, I've heard at the playgrounds, as I've taken my grandkids there, adults asking whether, I see there's a lot of playground equipment showing up on this budget here. So and so my question has to do with, as staff considers the design of these playgrounds, and I don't know if this is just replacing existing equipment, or whether there are opportunities to introduce new features to the playgrounds, but.
Counselor Day, you're kind of breaking up a little bit. I'm not sure if other people are having that same effect. Yeah, I think we may have just lost her.
I can hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. We lost the last 30 seconds or so.
Okay. Anyhow, just to get to the point, I was just wondering if there's any opportunities as equipment is replaced or new equipment is introduced to consider equipment that could also be used for exercising with adults or teenagers, as well as young children? I don't know a lot about this technology of playground equipment and whether, you know, that's a feasible kind of thing to integrate all ages using park equipment. But I thought I'd just ask it and ask for a response from staff.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Day. Mr. Herman, I think this falls directly into your area of expertise.
Sure. Thanks, worship. The one question, all of these items that you see in this plan are replacement playgrounds. There's no new playgrounds noted here. They're all replacement of existing structures. I've never actually heard of combining adult workout equipment with playground. But what we're anticipating is some consultation prior to each of these replacements, just to ensure that, that, you know, just because a structure that was aimed at five to 10-year-olds 20 years ago was put in there, doesn't mean that's what needs to be replaced. So there'll be some consultation to give people opportunity to give us some feedback prior to completing the design. Certainly, one of the items that we've been talking a fair bit about is inclusive structures, where folks with children with some disabilities would be able to make use of the structures as well. So hopefully, with some consultation, we'll replace those structures with something that the community will be able to utilize. They'll be well-used and will hit the needs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Day. I have Counselor Appleton and Zelka.
Thank you, worship. And I appreciate the question about playgrounds specifically and sort of the, and I'm pleased to see sort of the systematic replacement of playground equipment being included in the budget. I'm going, I guess I've got two questions. Firstly, I'm assuming that sort of the prioritization matrix, or there's some sort of matrix or prioritization scheme being applied here to say this one versus this, you know, as to how these are laid out as far as timing for replacement. So I just wanted to confirm that that was something that was being used. And then I just wanted to confirm, just as a follow-up to that, that there, that other facilities, such as the Spray Park, the Carnarvon Spray Park, would be entrained in sort of the Carnarvon master planning process. So it wouldn't necessarily be on that repair list at this stage of the game. And I also just wanted to find out where the Willow's Playground might sit in that in that matrix as well. Thank you, worship.
Sure, Counselor Appleton. Mr. Herman, you can answer as much of that as you can. And if we can't get it all today, maybe we could just circulate some of the information via email as well. But answer as much as you can.
Sure, worship. Thank you. The first question, hopefully, my bad memory is good enough to remember the three points. The first one being is, are we prioritizing those playgrounds? Absolutely. Mr. Heidley and his staff, those playgrounds are inspected on a regular basis, and they're prioritized based on their condition. Mr. Heidley, as well as Mr. Mickle and Ms. McCarron are on the line. If you want more details as to how they've arrived at the order that they've arrived at, but most certainly, there's a prioritization process applied to the playgrounds. The second point was to do with the Spray Park, I believe. Yes, that's part of the Carnarvon Park Master Plan and the, and the design of the rest of the park. The implementation of that plan is kind of split into two parts. And the first part is the design of the building, which we will endeavor to undertake later this year. Then the remainder of the park needs to be designed in a detailed way to so we can go to tender and implement. And the Spray Park and the elements that were involved in that plan encompass all the remaining parts that would need to be designed outside of the building. So hopefully, that answers that question. With respect to Willow's, Willow's will be a little bit different than the others. And I think it's the next to come online, but so potentially added in 2027. But certainly, given the location, we will need to talk about consultation with First Nations and what have you. That's a location that has, in the past, you know, for instance, we would have to have an archaeologist on site to ensure that if anything is uncovered, it's dealt with appropriately and things like that. So and there's probably some discussions that would need to take place even prior to getting to that point. So I believe we're hopeful that some of the discussions we'll be having over the next year will enlighten us as to whether that project is ready to be going forward in 2027 and added to the list.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Is that sufficient, Counselor Appleton?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, worship. My thanks to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors Zelka.
Just a brief comment to add to some of my colleagues. I'm also very pleased to see so much attention being paid to the playgrounds in our various parks. With respect to adult facilities potentially being added, I just wanted to convey something I discovered. Last summer, I was staying at Rath Trevor Beach Park, and I happened to head over to the Parksville Community Park, looking maybe for their water park, only to find it had been completely replaced with something that's now referred to as the Adventure World Playground, not only for kids, but also for adults, right down by the water. And I'm hoping, please, let's steal whatever we can from that park, because it was fantastic. And some of those aspects would definitely be suitable here in Oak Bay.
Thank you, Counselors Zelka. I don't see any other hands up, so I'll just, I have one other sort of final question on this one, Mr. Herman, on the playgrounds. I think it's of interest, just because we have not done any playground, significant playground replacements for quite a long time. So I think there's a lot of pent-up interest in this. I remember when this was at the Parks, Rec and Culture Commission in the past, there were some good points made about the need for more accessibility. So for people with disabilities and other pieces to change the, like, the base material so that it's more of a flat surface and things for people to get around. Are those sort of standards already developed within our community? Or are they things that need additional funds or time to put forward? Or is it essentially dealt with on a case-by-case basis as each one is designed?
Thank you, worship. I think probably more on a case-by-case basis. We don't have a standard. So for instance, you can get tiles, sort of rubberized tiles on playgrounds, but they're significantly more expensive than your typical pea gravel or sand or chip ground cover. So as we go into each of these, we'll bring those ideas forward. But certainly, as I mentioned earlier, inclusion and accessibility, as you noted, was something that the previous commission was very concerned about and wanted to see improvements in. So staff have certainly held on to those thoughts and will continue to do so as we bring those pieces into the fold.
Great. I appreciate that, Mr. Herman. And yeah, as long as we're using that, that good work done, then that's very appropriate. So thank you. Is there any other questions of staff on Parks and Rec or any other item that we've gone over today? I don't see any. So, Mr. Payne, perhaps you can just remind council and the public about what's up for next week as our third and final installment of budget review?
Oh, yes. Thank you, worship. We've really come to the end of the budget presentations. Record timing, I have to say, in basically two meetings. We'll still proceed with the budget deliberation meeting a week from today, February 24. We won't have time to produce a new third version for review. But just, you know, all the noted changes that will occur will make sure we get into the third version. Corporate Service Department, they like to have things done on time, and the deadline is tomorrow to get those changes. So I won't make that deadline. So at the next meeting, we will do our standard overview to the financial plan. There can be a discussion with the community and any final questions with council. Staff will ask for final direction from council to go and prepare the financial plan bylaw based on the draft that we've seen. And I anticipate that's our way forward.
Great. Thank you very much for that. With no other hands up, I'm just going to make a final comment after I get a quick sip of water, because I'm about to cough. There we go. Just I want to again express my thanks to staff. And I think you noted the speed with which we're going through this process and reviewing it. This is really, as I said earlier, down to the fact that we have, A, proper long-term financial planning, so there's not surprises popping up, and B, you know, the feedback provided by council, by the public, and by staff members to improve the readability and clarity of our financial planning. It allows for so much pre-preparation before these meetings. So it's very nice to be able to come here, have most of the answers, questions answered beforehand, and be able to kind of just touch on these as a proper governance level body. So again, I just want to express, I know how much work this is. It's an enormous amount of work, as it is always, to prepare really good reports. This is one of those to help guide a good discussion, both for us and the community. So I will probably say it again at the next meeting, but thank you again for all the staff for the work made to make this. This is, in four years, you've gone basically from a spreadsheet to this in terms of clarity. It's sort of a world of difference in terms of how for the layperson to be able to see what's going on. All right. So with that, I think we can just have a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you at council on Monday. Or actually, no, we won't. Moved and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? We'll see you next Thursday. And everybody have a great evening. Thanks for everything.